Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 27, 2020 Glendale City Council Meeting. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council Meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable charter and spectrum cable channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandelca.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting "Live Streaming", which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100 on the screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kusakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajanian?
Present. What's next, please?
The agenda for the October 27, 2020 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Wednesday, October 21, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, what's next?
Next would be three presentations and appointments, three agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, November 3, 2020. It will be handled by Deputy City Manager John Tukthalian.
But we didn't do the flag salute.
We didn't do the flag salute.
We have to do the flag salute.
Oh, I'm sorry about the flag salute. Forgot about that, Mayor.
Okay. Please join me in the flag salute.
I... ...introduce the United States of America, a republic which stands one name: indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank you this evening for your continued blessing on this community and its citizens. Grant our elected officials the wisdom to make appropriate decisions. Be with each of us in our daily lives, that we present ourselves in a manner that is pleasing to you. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Okay, what's next, Mr. Ajemian?
Now would be John Tukthalian.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of council. Next week, we will start the afternoon meetings with the Housing Authority meeting. There's one item on the business agenda by the city attorney, and that's a consideration of amending bylaws to the Glendale Housing Authority related to meeting schedule and changes to the authority members' compensation. There will also be a special meeting, a joint meeting between the City Council and the Housing Authority, with one item on the agenda from Community Services and Parks, and that's regarding their fiscal year 2122 proposed annual action plan for three different things. The first is a community development block grant. The second is the emergency solutions grant. And the third is the Home Investment Partnership Act program. Finally, the evening meeting of the City Council, commenced at 6:00 p.m. will have two items. The first is a report from the City Manager's office regarding legislative update. That'll be specific to the governor's actions on state legislation. And the second will be the monthly financial status report by the Finance Department. That concludes next week's preview.
Thank you, Mr. Tukthalian. What's next, please?
Next would be presentation, Green Business Certification Program.
Okay, thank you. I have... Oh, Mr... I'm sorry. Mr. Golanyan.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. It is my pleasure to introduce this item, and we have a short presentation from staff. This is regarding Green Business Certification Program. This aligns with the city's goal of sustainability and environmental-friendly initiatives. And I'm going to turn it over to Etienne Ozark, our Integrated Waste Superintendent, for a brief presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council. I would like to roll out this evening the City of Glendale's Green Business Program. And... Next slide, please. The scope of the program is to provide free assistance to all of our local businesses, to help them become more efficient, profitable, and to encourage them to be environmentally sustainable. The scope of the program is part of the larger California Green Business Network, and this is a statewide network that is non-governmental and is aimed to connect businesses with each other. Right now, the network consists of about 4,200 businesses. And our program was established in March 2019 based on that model. And it provides us standards to be able to measure performance, such as water efficiency, waste reduction, obviously, and to provide a standard metrics for program success. Next slide. So the value to our city businesses is it provides us with a non-regulatory relationship with our businesses. And we are able to help them research options in all areas where there's environmental impact, such as waste, water, electricity. And it's a way for us to encourage businesses to reward environmental excellence. And occasionally, we are also able to be the conduit for rebates as well. Next slide, please.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 27, 2020 Glendale City Council Meeting. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council Meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable charter and spectrum cable channel six and AT&amp;T U-verse channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandelca.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting "Live Streaming," which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100 on the screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Broadman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kusakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Agajanian.
Present. What's next, please?
The agenda for the October 27, 2020 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Wednesday, October 21, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, what's next?
Next would be three presentations and appointments, three agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, November 3, 2020. It'll be handled by Deputy City Manager John Tukthalian.
But we didn't do the flag salute.
We didn't do the flag salute.
We have to do flag salute.
Oh, I'm sorry about the flag salute. Forgot about that, Mayor.
Okay. Please join me in the flag salute.
I... Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, in a public which stands one name, undergo indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank you this evening for your continued blessing on this community and its citizens. Grant our elected officials the wisdom to make appropriate decisions. Be with each of us in our daily lives that we present ourselves in a manner that is pleasing to you. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Okay, what's next, Mr. Ajemi?
Now would be John Tukthalian.
Okay. Mr. Tukthalian.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of council. Next week, we will start the afternoon meetings with the Housing Authority meeting. There's one item on the business agenda by the city attorney, and that's a consideration of amending bylaws to the Glendale Housing Authority related to meeting schedule and changes to the authority members' compensation. There will also be a special meeting, a joint meeting between the city council and the housing authority, with one item on the agenda from Community Services and Parks, and that's regarding their fiscal year 2122 proposed annual action plan for three different things. The first is the Community Development Block grant, the second is the Emergency Solutions grant, and the third is the Home Investment Partnership Act program. Finally, the evening meeting of the city council, commenced at 6:00 PM, will have two items. The first is a report from the city manager's office regarding legislative update. That'll be specific to the governor's actions on state legislation. And the second will be the monthly financial status report by the finance department. That concludes next week's preview.
Thank you, Mr. Tukthalian. What's next, please?
Next would be presentation, Green Business Certification Program.
Okay. Thank you. I have... Oh, Mr... I'm sorry. Mr. Golanyan.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. It is my pleasure to introduce this item, and we have a short presentation from staff. This is regarding Green Business Certification Program. This aligns with the city's goal of sustainability and environmental-friendly initiatives, and I'm going to turn it over to Etienne Ozark, our Integrated Waste Superintendent, for a brief presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I would like to roll out this evening the City of Glendale's Green Business Program. Next slide, please. The scope of the program is to provide free assistance to all of our local businesses to help them become more efficient, profitable, and to encourage them to be environmentally sustainable. The scope of the program is part of the larger California Green Business Network, and this is a statewide network that is non-governmental and is aimed to connect businesses with each other. Right now, the network consists of about 4,200 businesses, and our program was established in March 2019 based on that model, and it provides us standards to be able to measure performance such as water efficiency, waste reduction, obviously, and to provide a standard metrics for program success. Next slide. So the value to our city businesses is it provides us with a non-regulatory relationship with our businesses, and we are able to help them research options in all areas where there's environmental impact, such as waste, water, electricity, and it's a way for us to encourage businesses to reward environmental excellence. And occasionally, we are also able to be the conduit for rebates as well. Next slide, please. Currently, we have 15 businesses that have signed on and been certified since March 2019, and these 15 businesses also include the City of Glendale's Public Library Building and the variety of things that we've recommended, which they've incorporated in their practices, including some things like aerators, low-flow, low-water-flow fixtures. And the business owners are very grateful for our assistance. Next slide, please. So right now, these are the 15 businesses that we have, and they are to receive a commendation this evening, and also they are providing also model for the next wave of businesses that will be signing on. Next slide, please. The last step that we give them as part of this whole environmental change is that once they're certified, they receive a plaque from us, they are recognized on the city website for their efforts, and they're also listed on the state network of green businesses. But as I said before, it's a way for us to encourage non-regulatory environmental performance. As you know, the city is moving towards more sustainable practices, and so it's a way for us to kind of incorporate that and develop that focus instead of just the regulatory, "you must do it." So we already have businesses that are being reviewed right now, so I anticipate that in the next year, there'll be an additional list of businesses that will be applying for certification. Are there any questions about the program?
Not... I mean, I don't have any question. I just have, I guess... I'm sorry.
I have some questions.
Okay, Mr. Broadman.
Yes. Etienne, thank you for that presentation, and it's a good program, and obviously, you all want to reach a lot more businesses. Fifteen is, as I'm sure you would agree, you know, just the start. So could you just tell me, you said there's some other businesses that we're expecting. What's in the pipeline right now? And maybe you could just describe a little bit what the process is if a business is interested, what they go through to get certified?
Well, the first thing they do is they apply. They want to participate. They want to... They need assistance with some environmental question, so the initiative is on them to approach us in the first place. But also, it's if there are any environmental areas where, rather than knocking on the door of a regulator and saying, "I may have a problem here," it allows them to talk to other people that are non-regulatory that can help them change any of those practices. Does that answer your question?
No. I mean, what... Just what I'm wondering is, what is this certification process like? So they contact us.
Yes.
They say they want to go through the process. So then what happens? What kind of assessment is done? How do they get to the end of the process and they get their award?
There's a whole checklist. For example, we review their waste bills, we review their water bills, there's a whole checklist of things that are done. In a pre-COVID environment, it was really done on-site. Right now, most of the work is done online with the exchange of documentation, and our staff is reviewed, involved in reviewing the documentation and saying, "Okay, here are our recommendations in certain areas where, you know, some changes can be made."
And how many are in the pipeline?
Right now, with the COVID, it's too early to tell, but we do have some that have already been worked on. I would venture at this time, probably about three or five.
Okay, so, and what do they get other than the plaque, and they get their name on our website, they probably get some tips on how they can save costs and be more environmental? What... Is there anything else?
Well, they become part of a network, and it's a little bit like a mentoring program where they can mentor others, others can mentor them in a variety of environmental areas. So it's kind of like when we used to have neighbors, and you could kind of say, "How did you fix this? How did you fix that?" It's that kind of network.
Also, they get mayor's commendation.
They get mayor's commendation? Okay, wow.
That's important.
Yeah. Anyway, that's... Yeah, I think, you know, these kinds of things are good. I just am wondering how we reach more businesses and what can we do here, you know, on council to accelerate, you know, this effort? And I know that there are outside groups, in particular Glendale Environmental Coalition, that are interested in helping get the word out, recommend businesses. I don't know exactly, you'd have to ask them, but, you know, I think we all want to make this more than just a small number of businesses. So tell us how we can help.
I agree, yes.
Help outside groups how they can help, and let's... I know, I mean, I know you've got a lot on your plate with the SB 1383 implementation and the rest of it, but I'd really like to see this move, you know, move out into the mainstream.
I agree, and this program is only one side of the coin because it's non-regulatory. The other side of the coin is regulatory, and as you're well aware, with SB 1383 next year, we really have to reach every single business and make them aware of the new regulatory requirements. Those are not optional. So as part of that effort of now the regulators are coming, and that puts the city in the position of being the regulator for implementation, the businesses will need to know what they have to do, but as part of that, there's also the other side of the coin, which we can present to help them become more environmentally sustainable.
And if I may add, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Broadman.
Yes.
That's a very good point. As you know, this program is, in its infancy, it's only been around for a year, and unfortunately, like Etienne mentioned, COVID-19 and the pandemic didn't help the process, so we will put a greater emphasis on marketing this program and publicizing on all of our channels as much as we possibly can.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's a take a lot of resource from the city to bring a business through this process. In other words, if 100 businesses came today and said they wanted to do it, would that be something we can handle, or is it something they're mostly doing on their own?
So, Councilmember Broadman, Mr. Mayor, if I may...
Mr. Yazdan Brony.
Thank you. So we wanted to really use tonight as the kickoff point for this, even though this project program has been going on for about a year, as Mr. Golanyan mentioned, it's in its infancy. So with this, basically, kind of the kickoff point, we are doing a much broader outreach in terms of reaching out to the businesses. We're going to have... We're planning on holding workshops and inviting businesses to kind of get acquainted with the program. It is a business-to-business opportunity, so B-to-B opportunity for the businesses, but in addition, you mentioned, what is the process? It's a checklist that we go through and kind of do an audit on their water, wastewater, energy efficiency, and other areas, and we provide them with helpful tips and how they can make their program basically sustainable and more efficient. So, and with the advent of or implementation of SB 1383, that's going to give us an even bigger, I guess, platform to kind of invite them in and, you know, make sure that we're orienting them with all the benefits of the program, which is not only to improve their processes, but also the business-to-business aspect that they can be in touch with other businesses.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for reporting. Okay, by that, I have, as I said, most importantly, I have mayor's, City of Glendale mayor's commendation I have for these businesses, and there are 15 of them, 15 green business names that I will read a little bit later. "In recognition of achieving green business certification by the City of Glendale through visionary leadership, organizational commitment, and the successful integration of environmental sustainability. Your contribution helped make the Glendale community healthier and more livable while conserving resources and saving money. On behalf of the City of Glendale, thank you for making a positive impact on people and our planet and businesses. Our Chromosphere..." I hope I said it right. Chromosphere. "CR Digital Solutions Foster All. The Glendale Central Library. Hang Loose Hawaiian Shave Ice. Imagine Project. JSDA Inc. Kit and Company. Montrose White Means. Novin Herbs and Spices. Once Upon a Time Bookstore. Peak Trace. SIG Property Management. True Master Inc. Yoga. URT. Yoga, Earth, I don't know, whatever is the right name." So I have all these. These are the 15 businesses. They will get this City of Glendale's mayor's commendation, and we will pass it to them maybe tomorrow. Okay, now we have another present, I guess.
Yes.
Okay. Chief Politis, Mr.... Okay, let's go to our Mr. Ajemi.
The 3C would be presentation, "Recognition of Glendale Police Officer Anthony Chacon in Receiving the National Center for Urban School Transformations 2020 Volunteer Award."
Mr. Politis. Chief Politis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's really my honor to sit before you tonight to honor one of our police officers, Anthony Chacon, who is joining us virtually this evening. And I'm just going to give a little bit of a brief introduction because he did get a Volunteer of the Year Award from the National Center for Urban School Transformations. And to kind of put that in perspective, there are 30,000 urban schools across the United States, and this center out of San Diego State evaluates them and gives awards to the schools, of which they do 16 awards. Horace Mann was one of those, which got a gold award. Those schools also have an opportunity to nominate a volunteer for recognition. And so in this case, Anthony Chacon, who's been a police officer with us for, I've known him for almost two decades, I think, is the person who got that award, and it's not an award, it is actually the national award for this. He's done some amazing things. Those of you who've had an opportunity to meet Anthony know that he's a very, very special individual. He really cares about the community, and he has spent a lot of time engaging with Horace Mann Elementary. But as opposed to me sitting here and telling you the things that he actually did with the schools and the changes that he's had, the influence that he's made in a very positive way in the lives of schoolchildren and members of the community, I think I'm going to let a video do that where the principal, Rosa Alonso, of Horace Mann Elementary, explains why Anthony Chacon got this national award. So if we can just run that videotape, please.
It is with great honor that I congratulate Officer Anthony Chacon from the Glendale Police Department as this year's ENCA's Volunteer Award recipient. He is a true hero who has made a tremendous difference for our Horace Mann community. His role as a police officer is to serve and protect, but he does much more than that. He inspires. Officer Chacon is an inspirational role model. Our students and school community love seeing Officer Chacon during his weekly visits to our school. His huge smile shows that he truly cares for our school and all of our students. He doesn't hesitate to donate his time, money, and skills to help our school, even after a long work shift or on his day off. He models the importance of community service as he volunteers at many school events to help raise money, to talk about safety, to barbecue at our open house, to read to students, and even to talk to students about setting goals and working hard, as he connects to his experience as a police officer and SWAT member. Officer Chacon inspires by his compassion. He takes the time to understand our students and their needs and commits his energy to have a positive impact on our students, one child at a time. When he hears about a challenging student, he offers to be a positive support and talk to the students. He has even visited students' homes to coach them into making good choices. For example, we had one student who would not listen to his mother and violently refused to leave the house and come to school because he was so tired from staying up late playing video games. Officer Chacon visited his home to talk to him and motivated him to change his sleeping habits, and that student started coming to school. Another example of his compassion is when he heard of a family that only had one bed for the adults, and the children were sleeping on the floor. He bought a bed and presented it to the family during the holidays. Officer Chacon also inspires students to know the importance of reading to succeed in life. He looks for ways to support our school's instructional focus of reading comprehension. He overheard our school support staff discussing how to motivate our reluctant readers, and he shared an idea of starting WOW Wednesdays. He started the wonderful Outstanding and Wise Readers Award. He offered to buy pizza and ice cream to all the classes, with 100% of the students reaching their reading goal. We went from one or two classes meeting 100% to 10-plus classes every month. So a big wow to Officer Anthony for starting our WOW Wednesdays. So on behalf of our school, we thank Officer Anthony Chacon for being an inspirational role model who is committed to making a positive difference for our school and community. He truly deserves this special recognition.
So I don't think I can really add anything to that to kind of explain when we talk about officers engaging with the community, making a difference in the community, taking time to make a positive difference in people's lives, to do the job that we do, which can be very difficult, but to engage with the community with a heart and with compassion, I could not be prouder than to acknowledge Officer Chacon for this award. And as I said, he and all of the colleagues in the Glendale Police Department certainly congratulate him on this achievement. He is a true representative of the Glendale Police Department. So I'll turn that with that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief, and I guess Officer Chacon is on the video.
Yes.
So can we hear from him if he wants to say a few words? Officer Chacon?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here, sir.
Would you like to say a few words of what you are doing and how you got to this? This is major accomplishment. I congratulate you anyway, and I have a commendation, mayor's commendation, but I will wait until you finish your state.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you very much, sir. I just want to say thank you. Obviously, those words were very kind from the principal. I don't think I deserve any special recognition. I'm just very humbled that you guys would even ask me to come to the city council meeting. I appreciate all the work you guys do for the city. In regards to what I do for the children, to me, they're just, they have a special place in my heart. I know, I think in police work, we're out here dealing with kind of like the fruits of the problem when the children are the roots, and I think if we reach them first, they help us do a better job when they're older and with our community. It helps to, for them to have a good relationship with the police, so it kind of makes everybody's job all around much easier. So that's kind of where my heart is at. So, I mean, thank you, guys. I don't know what to say, but I really appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Okay, I have a City of Glendale mayor's commendation presented to Officer Anthony Chacon, National Center for Urban School Transformation Volunteer Award. Congratulations on receiving... on receiving the volunteer award from the National Center for Urban School Transformation for benevolent leadership and positive difference at Horace Mann Elementary School. Your passion, dedication, and generosity are truly appreciated and have touched the lives of many children and families in our community. I commend your hard work and passion and thank you for serving as a shining example to all. On behalf of the City of Glendale, I wish you continued success and signed by me, Veraj Agajanian, Mayor, October 27, 2020. Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Devine.
Officer Chacon, wow. Congratulations. Good job. And it's, you know, you're a exemplary police officer and we're so proud of you. Thank you so much for what you're doing for these kids. Fantastic.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other comment or I go to the next item? Is there anybody else who wants to comment? Okay, this is, by the way, I hope you can see, this is your commendation. And again, congratulations. What's next, please?
I do have a presentation from Stephen Small from Glendale Association of Realtors regarding Armenian Fund donation.
Thank you, Mister Small. It's now, you have the floor.
Awesome, awesome. Well, good evening, Mayor Agajanian and members of the city council. Thank you for having me this evening. For those who don't know me, my name is Stephen Small and the 2020 president of the Glendale Association of Realtors. As we've seen in the media and heard from our friends and neighbors, major hostilities have been occurring in recent months between the countries of Armenia and Azerbaijan. Civilians have been caught in the crossfire with devastating results. And to provide assistance to civilians in this difficult time, I'm pleased and proud to share with you that the Glendale Association of Realtors has pledged donation of $120,000 to the Armenian Fund. The Armenian Fund, nonprofit and nonsecretarian organization whose mission is to help the people of Armenia with humanitarian aid and infrastructure development. Nearly 50% of the Glendale Association of Realtors membership is of Armenian heritage, excuse me. And many of our members, friends, and neighbors know someone or have family in Armenia right now who are directly affected by this. Some have lost their homes, possessions, while others have lost their lives. And we want to recognize our members and our neighbors' contributions to our community, and we stand in grief with those who have been affected. The Glendale Association's donation is intended for humanitarian aid, including food, clothing, medicines, and housing to these most affected. And we want to encourage our friends and neighbors in the Glendale community as well to help where they can and please donate to the Armenian Fund. I would like to take a moment to thank Mayor Agajanian for allowing me to speak tonight and share with you all. I truly appreciate the mayor, mayor, and everything you do for our great city. I also would like to quickly thank the Glendale Association of Realtors, our CEO David Kissinger, my president-elect Rick Binati, and the rest of the 2020 Board of Directors, our membership, affiliates, and staff for actively supporting our association and myself all year long in fear of generosity. The mission of the Glendale Association of Realtors is twofold. We support real estate professionals and their business, and at the same time, we also uphold the communities in which we serve. We are proud to support our Armenian friends and neighbors in this time of need, and we celebrate the Armenian community's accomplishments and achievements as thriving members of our city and of our country. Thank you again, Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council, again, for giving me the opportunity to share tonight. I appreciate even each and every one of you, and I appreciate your leadership during this wild and crazy year it's been. So thank you and have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Thank you, Mister Small. That's kind of you. This is on behalf of Glendale Association of Realtors. I will thank each and every one of your members and board members. This is a generous donation. 120,000 is a significant money. And as has been mentioned, Armenian Fund is nonprofit organization, and this money will help them to help the public. Thank you very much.
Mister Mayor?
Is there, yes. Is there any other comments?
Yeah, Councilmember Devine, did you want to say something before I did?
You know, I, I just want to do, compliment Stephen on the job he's doing as president of the Realtors Association. And for the generosity of all of your members, thank you so much. This is so, so kind, so kind of all of you. Thank you. Thanks, Arti.
Thank you, Councilmember Devine.
Thank you. And I also want to thank the Glendale Association of Realtors. I want to thank you for opening up your hearts and your wallets at this time. I also want to just draw a distinction. I know that Mister Small means what he says and means well, but we have to try and attempt to stay away from any language that tries to draw a false equivalency between what's happening in Armenia right now in terms of a conflict escalating. I think, you know, for the sake of setting the record straight, particularly here in Glendale where we have such a highly hyper-informed population that's following the news daily. Armenia is a victim of an aggressive attack by its neighboring country of Azerbaijan. Three seafires have been attempted to be brokered. The first one by Russia, the second one by France, and the third one by the United States. All three having been violated by the country of Azerbaijan, not by Armenia. I know, again, Mister Small means well. I know he didn't necessarily pick those words to necessarily draw an equivalence between Azerbaijan and Armenia, but I do want to make that clear for anyone who's watching this. And I know that our Realtors will continue to stand and support the freedom-loving people of Artsakh, the freedom-loving people of Armenia. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kasakian.
Yes, Mister Small.
Yes, Mister Small. I just would like to thank Mister Small.
Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you. I would just like to thank Mister Small and all the Realtors in the organization. It warms my heart to see the continuing outpouring of support from various groups in the city for the innocent victims in Artsakh and Armenia of this unprovoked aggression. So thank you, Mister Small.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Appreciate it.
Okay, all right. Now, thank you. And what's next, please?
Next is consent items, including minutes to following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. Mayor and council members, I do have two people waiting on the line. One is about 4C and the other is on 4D.
And I, and Mayor, I would like to pull 4C.
Pull 4C. Okay, we pull 4C.
Mayor, we would have to pull 4C and 4D because callers are calling in for 4C and 4D.
4D. Okay, we pull 4D.
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Pull, okay. The balance of the calendar, is there a motion? Who's?
Is there a second?
Is there a second? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, now item, consent item, 4C.
4C, Public Works, Regarding City of Glendale Response to 2019, 2020 Report by Los Angeles County Civil Grand Jury Regarding Cutting Down on Food Waste, One Resolution Improving the City of Glendale's Proposed Response Letter to the Los Angeles County Civil Grand Jury Regarding Cutting Down on Food Waste. Mayor, would you like me to take the call first?
Yes, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Mister Golanyan first, and then we go to the caller.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'd like to invite Yazdan Umrani, our Public Works Director, to provide a brief report on this item. Plus, we'll take the opportunity to also provide a, an update on our edible food recovery program in the city. And I think it'll be helpful for council and the public to hear what the city has done thus far and plans for the future.
So to our callers, so please wait after presentation, but Mister Yazdani, we will go to the caller. Mister Yazdan.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, members of city council. So we have a brief presentation for you, which will go-
I'm very sorry, Mister Yazdan Umrani.
Yeah, no problem.
Very sorry.
That's okay. We have a brief presentation for you tonight, which will go through our responses to the grand jury and the items that they had identified. We did put together the, our responses according to the templates that they gave us. And also, as soon as we go through that section, we'll cover City of Glendale's effort in terms of the edible food recovery program. So with that, I will introduce Mister Dan Hardgrove, Assistant Public Works Director, who's going to go through this presentation.
Okay, Mister Hardgrove.
Good evening, Mister Mayor, members of city council. As Mister Umrani has mentioned, we're, we have a, if we can move to the next slide. We have kind of a two-part presentation this evening concerning the civil grand jury response to edible food waste, food waste diversion, as well as we want to, again, take the opportunity to highlight Glendale's edible food recovery program, give you an update where that stands. Next slide, please. Firstly, the, the grand jury is an organization that they're responsible for. Their primary responsibility is to investigate county and city JPAs. They have separate committees that look into specific areas of government and act an oversight and function by examining operations. And then they submit a final report of recommendations to the presiding judge of the Superior Court. In this case, the report was focused on cutting down on food waste. They entitled it a diet for landfills. The report was issued on July 31, 2020. It made several recommendations to increase food waste recycling and organic waste diversion. There were four recommendations that were specific to the 88 cities in the county, including Glendale, to respond. Glendale's responses were similar to a lot of other cities. One thing that's important to note here is the grand jury efforts did not take into consideration current or pending state law, specifically SB 1383, which is a pending state law that has a very comprehensive and far-reaching food waste and food recovery requirements. Next slide, please. As far as our responsibility as a city, we need to submit a response to the grand jury by October 30, 2020, hence our visit to council here this evening. And in the responses, the grand jury describes really specific guidelines for how to respond. We either agree or disagree and state whether the recommendation has already been implemented or is pending, whether the recommendation requires further analysis, or if we disagree why it would not be implemented because it's not warranted and reasonable. And then we have to provide an explanation. So our, our responses, our responses, proposed responses to the grand jury were formulated in this fashion. Next slide, please. The first recommendation, 1.1, is to establish a food waste drop-off center. The city disagreed with this recommendation, really because this is a, it's, this is a very plausible recommendation for a nonprofit organization, an outside organization to undertake. It is a very challenging with the city's resources to focus on the, the level of attention that it would need to orchestrate this program for the expected outcome. Instead, the, the City of Glendale intends to focus our resources on the implementing, implementation of the SB 1383 food waste diversion requirements. We feel this is the best approach for, for focusing our energies on what we, we want to do, as well as what we need to do as a community to meet the requirements of the state. Next slide, please. The second recommendation was for county and city officials to create incentive programs for residents and businesses to separate food waste. Here again, the city response, or proposed response was to disagree. Once again, SB 1383 has provisions in it that specifically require food waste diversion. It's mandated by law, so we'd not feel that the incentives would be necessary. We felt with our resources, in our opinion, it would be better spent on public outreach, holding workshops with stakeholders and food generators, and more targeted outreach. And next slide, please. The next recommendation, 1.1, was a little unusual. County officials should modify contracts with food vendors, companies that are inside county facilities. This, since this is really not applicable to us as a, as a city, the city response was to, or proposed response was to disagree. Additionally, under SB 1383, there are specific food waste and edible food recovery requirements for events and venue. This, this is part of what is called Tier Two of the regulation, which goes into effect in, as of January 2024, which I'll get into the tiers a little bit later in this discussion. Next slide, please. The final recommendation of the county, civil grand jury, rather, was that elected officials in the city should adopt 11 suggestions in the March 18, 2018 County Organics Waste Management Plan. In this case, the city agrees with the, with, with the recommendation. The city is in the process of implementing the, the countywide organ, organics waste management. All 11 of the, the county suggestions are addressed in the city plan. Exhibit B in the, the council report details are, what our responses are. Of course, implementation will be done to the extent that they align with the state law, mandating organics recycling, ultimately with our seeking compliance with, again, SB 1383. Next slide, please. With covering the, the responses or proposed responses to the grand jury, we did want to spend a little bit of time describing what Glendale's edible food recovery program looks like today and, and what we hope it to look like in the near future. Next slide. First, I've been saying SB 1383 repeatedly in this presentation and, and short of a study session on SB 1383, which is a very comprehensive regulation. I thought I would just summarize it in general for the benefit of council and public. SB 1383 focused on, focuses on primarily on residential and commercial organics collection services and diversion. However, there's a very large component within SB 1383 for the city to have an edible food recovery program in place by January 2022. Again, I mentioned the Tier One and Tier Two earlier. Tier One is the, is the first component which needs to be in place by January 2022. This deals with grocery stores, supermarkets, larger food processors and distributors. The next tier is for smaller organizations, restaurants, hotels that have eating facilities, or health, gyms or health facilities that have eating facilities, as well, as I mentioned earlier, events and venues. The, we have had a draft, seen the draft regulations for SB 1383. There's currently, right now, at this moment, they are ruling out model, model structures for the cities to follow to, to, to meet those regulations. But the, the, the regulation itself has not been yet implemented. We anticipate that should take place by early to the middle of next year. Next slide, please. As far as the city efforts with edible food recovery program, we've done a lot of work in this area. The city has, first of all, we need to determine who are our food generators in the city. We developed a comprehensive database which identified our food generators. Some of these are very obvious, Ralph Supermarket, something of that nature, but some of them are less obvious. If you have a company called The Jones Group, we need to do a little bit more digging and research to, to determine if they're involved with food, food services in any, any way. Next, we identified eight food recovery services, food pantries within the City of Glendale. In addition, we met with the Los Angeles Regional Food Bank and identified other regional organizations involved with food recovery, food donations. This is, this is a, going to be a large undertaking that we're pursuing, and we need to have a more comprehensive view of who can be involved and who could, who will be involved. To that end, we reviewed- To that end, we reviewed some of the organizations that we spoke with and have now formed a partnership with one of the regional groups, which is called Food Finders. And thus far, we have six Glendale businesses who are participating in edible food recovery, or the Edible Food Recovery Program. That includes Ralph's Supermarket, two of The Jones Markets, 85 Degrees Bakery, Saipan Bakery, and Village French Bakery. And we're pleased to report the outcome since August. We just have just under 100,000 pounds of food that has been recovered since the start up in August. Next slide, please. Continuing work in this area, we need to continue to analyze our covered eligible food generators and, and more thoroughly categorize them within the Tier Two and Tier One categories, as well as identify if they have existing recovery programs. A lot of the, particularly supermarkets notably have existing programs where they're, they're taking back extra food, and they are participating already in food donations. This is important to us because we need to capture the, the food donations they're making for the purposes of our reporting it to the state. We'll continue to work with the local food recovery services and seek to identify additional partners. We're in the process of developing a webpage and outreach materials for the generators, as well as the general public. And we're also in the process of updating our solid waste ordinance to address food recovery and all aspects of SB 1383. Staff intends to bring that to council, really, in a couple of phases, because there's some cleanup that we seek to do with the ordinance. And then we have to, once the SB 1383 is put in place, during our term, we're looking at, early next year, to get, get started with the ordinance review. Next slide, please. And continuing on, again, our next steps, most of them become very administrative at some point. We'll continue to investigate opportunities with regional, for regional collaboration. Again, this is to build our network. But also, we'll be working on the reporting requirements for 1383. We need to have provisions within the ordinance that, that these, these organizations and services report to the city for the purpose of state, our state reporting. We have to work on conducting annual inspections with generators for compliance. That is a component of the regulation. And ultimately, to document, track, and provide performance metrics that we will submit to Calor Cycle as part of our annual report. And with that, are there any questions that I may be able to answer?
Mr. Imran, you want to continue saying something, or no? Okay. Before I go to my colleagues, I want to say, not only this item, and Item 4B, which was about the police department, you know, the jail in police department. I mean, I want to complain, actually. I mean, this, I'm the mayor and, I mean, same as probably council members. I mean, this grand jury came here, went to police department, to the jail, they have, they're seeing problems, let's say, regardless, it's valid or not valid, complaints they are presenting to us. But they came down here, they left, months and months passed, and myself, as the mayor, I was unaware that this was happening in our city. Why is it that, and I'm sure same with our council members, they have been unaware this was going on in, I don't know, June, or maybe sooner or later, doesn't matter, and months passed? And why we were unaware of it? Anybody knew about this grand jury visit to jail and for this diet for landfills, for our landfills?
They told me.
I'm sorry?
They told me, Mr. Mayor.
They told you when? Two days ago?
No, I'm kidding.
Yesterday?
No, I'm kidding. I mean, that's the point. They do a surprise inspection. They do a surprise inspection of the jail, they do a surprise survey of our food collection practices, so.
No, that was surprise visit. But that surprise was months ago, not now, you know? Yes, Mr. Garcia wants to answer.
Sure, I will give it a shot. Mr. Mayor, members of council, as we've noted previously, with respect to, just generally speaking, the civil grand jury, on some items, like the detention item that was the other item, that's something that they have an ongoing jurisdiction over, so, you know, obviously, going forward, if we have some sort of visit or inspection like that, we will ensure that that information gets to the council. At the conclusion of that, I would note that we, there was nothing that staff expected like what we saw in the report, so that's why we were waiting for the report. As far as this, this item that's on the agenda now that we're speaking to, it was a countywide report, so there was no inspection or anything, they were just analyzing food waste issues in general. And then we got the report, actually, and the report that comes in, comes to you, and then is disseminated to staff to get, to prepare the response, and so that's over here. So it's, you know, going forward, we'll make sure that that information gets out to you and is confirmed to the mayor and the council as soon as the report comes in. But I guess from our perspective at the staff level, we kind of saw this as par for the course. We would get it, we would analyze it, we would prepare a response, and then we would bring it to you like we're doing now.
Okay. Ms. Devine, do you have any question or comment?
Well, I have comments. I don't know, I didn't know if you wanted me to do them now or listen to the phone calls, but I will say this.
Okay, we have one call, so let's go, go, let's go to the caller, and then we'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Pinkerton. Jennifer, thank you for staying on the line. You're alive.
Good evening, members of the council members, hi. Jennifer Pinkerton, a member of the Glendale Environmental Coalition, and I'm someone who's worked in the solid waste and recycling field for almost 30 years now, calling with some comments regarding the city's letter to the grand jury on the topic of food waste. I'd first like to begin by acknowledging that I know city staff has done a lot of hard work in preparation for SB 133, as Mr. Hardgrove just outlined, but I also call for some suggestions for revising the letter. I believe it's very important that the letter mention the work that you still have in progress, such as the ordinances that you are developing, and the software and the database you've developed for tracking local businesses. Secondly, I would recommend that the letter explicitly mention that a franchise hauling agreement is in development. Third, because there is insufficient food waste processing capacity in this region, both I and the GEC believe that the city really needs to incorporate upstream activities, which in this case means food waste prevention education. Waste prevention really is the equivalent of energy efficiency. It's one of your least expensive and probably one of your most effective options out there. Fourth, I would ask that the city reconsider incentives. In my experience, even modest incentives generate higher interest and participation rates, even for mandated activities. On the topic of food waste drop-off locations, I do disagree here, I think they're both effective and feasible. Pre-pandemic, the nonprofit organization LA Compost was collecting about half a ton of food waste each week at each of two farmers' markets in Los Angeles, and some of that tonnage actually came from Glendale. A lot of Glendale residents took their food waste to that water village site, and many of those same residents continue to use LA Compost, other food waste drop-off locations at this time. And lastly, please consider revising your commercial multifamily building codes, because we really do want to encourage that as much food waste as possible be processed on-site, rather than being put into bins and hauled for off-site processing. And that means we need to allocate sufficient space for equipment such as food waste dehydrators or other processing equipment, and you also need additional space for bins for separated food waste. So you really have to look at the space needs for equipment and operations. And on a related note, you also need adequate commercial space for equipment and operations that facilitate the donation of surplus edible food, and that donation is required both by SB 1383, and it's very critical, given the regional level of food insecurity. So I've seen organizations that have double sets of refrigerators, for example, where surplus food for donation is kept separate. So a lot of just practical things, and I think you need to look at space allocation to facilitate food waste collection and food donation both. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, do we have any other calls?
We do, Mayor, but it's for the next item.
Okay. Ms. Devine.
Yes, thank you. The reason, the reason I pulled this item was because it was in October of 2019 that I asked for a staff report and a plan for a food recovery program, October 2019. So when I read this, this report, I was, I was rather upset to find that this civil grand jury had found us deficient, and the things that they were asking us to do, and I have not spoken to Jennifer Pinkerton, but I have to agree with her, that to establish a weekly drop-off center at a market, at the Montos Market, would have been, seems to me, to be an easy solution. To offer incentives if you drop food off at the market would be, I think, would save you a lot in marketing. So I, I am happy, pleased to see the progress that we have made in this food recovery program that you described tonight. However, I wish we would have had this report sooner. Maybe if you would have presented something like this to the civil grand jury, it would have gone a little differently. I don't know, but I think that we need to start a, and establish a weekly drop-off center or place, location, and I think we need to offer incentives for that. And, you know, the idea, the reason I brought that up in 2019 was so that we could get ahead of the, ahead of the curve and get our programs started. When I read this staff report, and I see the City of Los Angeles, Manhattan Beach, Claremont, Redondo Beach, and so many other cities already have programs in place, and we, it just seemed like we could have been there with them. So I hope that we will follow through on the programs that were discussed tonight, and perhaps listen to Ms. Pinkerton, I think she makes some excellent points. I agree with her on every single item that she mentioned, and let's move forward on this and get started. Thank you. Thank you to staff for bringing forward all of these, these programs that we had no idea about.
Okay, if there is no other comments, may I have asked?
I'll move the item.
Okay, is there a second?
Well, can I, can I make a comment, please?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Are we, I, I'm not comfortable with the letter the way it is. I mean, we're saying things are, you know, unnecessary and unwarranted, that clearly are not, not unnecessary and unwarranted, so I, I'm not, just not comfortable with how it's, how it's written, I think. I did talk to Jennifer, and I think it's important that we, you know, just say, it could be a few, few sentences, like what we are doing, and then take these other items under advisement. I think we should, you know, agree to look at some of these things, like drop-off centers, incentives, modifying the contract with vendors. I know they mentioned the county, but still, we have vendors, and we could, you know, say something about modifying with, with contracts with our vendors. I just, I felt the letter came across as just very dismissive, and I'm not comfortable, you know, supporting it. So if we're going to amend the letter, you know, I would kind of vote yes to, you know, on the understanding that it's going to be modified, otherwise, I just don't want to, I don't want to put my name behind it.
Okay, Mr. Yazdan Imran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, council member Brotman. So a couple of things. The grand jury basically did not do a survey. The grand jury basically provided a, the recommendation to all 88 cities. So this was independent of whether or not a city had a program or not. So they offered their recommendations to all 88 cities. So every single city in LA got basically the letter that we received. And then what we're, what we put together, basically, as Mr. Hardgrove mentioned in the beginning, in terms of the tone that you mentioned, was based on the template that they provided us. They asked us to specifically reply whether we agreed or disagree, or we didn't, we don't think it was unnecessary. So certainly, our intent wasn't to be dismissive or anything like that, we were just following the, the, the instructions, basically, that they had provided to us. Having said that, in terms of a couple of items that was, was mentioned earlier, the, the weekly drop-off or the drop-off locations, again, we think it's a great idea if, as was mentioned, a nonprofit organization was to manage it. We just wanted to make sure that, basically, we weren't responsible for contamination. You know, the food drop-offs involve certain risks, so if we're managing that process, we're also buying into the liability of any potential contamination or, you know, hazardous, potential hazardous inputs that, that is provided. And also, that was a, you know, kind of a nod to our limited resources, as you know, we're already stretched a little bit in terms of our staff, in terms of integrated waste. So we were just trying to be efficient. And one thing I would also...
[inaudible]
I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry. Oh.
One thing I would mention is that there was a survey that was done by, survey of all the responses by LA County cities, and we're pretty much in line with a lot of cities, including our neighboring cities, such as City of Pasadena, who had very similar responses to, to ours, City of Irwindale, City of Rolling Hills Estates. There's a lot of cities within the LA County that basically responded similarly to, to us, but that was in terms of the drop-off, that was really just the resources and the potential risk that we would, that we would take on. In terms of the incentives, real quick, again, because this is, no doubt, incentives could have a possible positive outcome, but then what would be the format? I mean, if it's a monetary thing, then, you know, that would be an additional expenditure that we would have to budget, and we feel, again, with our limited resources, that would be better spent on educating the public, holding workshops, and again, working in concert with NGOs or nonprofit organizations, folks that can help us achieve that goal. So those are just a couple of comments I wanted to make.
Yeah.
If I could just, if I could just briefly, I want to emphasize, I want to emphasize what Mr. Imran said. So one, there's no finding that Glendale was any way deficient in any of its programs or processes. This is a report that they prepare for countywide, and then they send to all the cities and ask for a requirement. The other thing, again, on that language about it being unreasonable and warranted, that's the language in the statute, that if we say we're not going to implement this particular program, we have to say why it's not reasonable and warranted, and, you know, that's, that's a decision of the council to say, we're going to either do this, or we're going to, we're going to study it further, or we're not going to do this. And what your staff is telling you is that some of these things, it doesn't, you know, from their viewpoint, it doesn't make sense to do it if we're going to, we have to move straight ahead to start doing AB 1383. So that's the reason. So it's not, again, not the intent for the city, for the staff to put the city in the position of being rude to the civil, civil grand jury, it's simply that that's the language that we have to cite if we say, this particular recommendation, we don't recommend moving forward with it.
Mr. Golania.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
One second, Mr. Golania.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I also wanted to add, despite the fact, and it's a fact of limited resources, we are going to do our best, make every effort, because we know this is important to council, and we are make, going to make every effort to build upon all the efforts that our team, our council, city staff, and integrated waste management folks have done, and we will bring a report back with an update of what we have been able to achieve in the near future.
Thank you. Mr. Brotman.
Yeah, so I'm glad we're having this discussion, and it sounds like there's a lot of interest in getting a report back, so that's all good. I don't want to, you know, belabor this too much, just as far as the letter goes, we can, can't we just say that we are going to, you know, evaluate, I don't know what the language you're allowed to use is, but rather than say it's unreasonable and unwarranted, we could say somehow, I don't know, we could take it under advisement, we're going to look into it, we're going to consider it, something like that. Can we not just lay out in one paragraph what we're already doing and just say we're going to look into these things, rather than say they're unreasonable and unwarranted?
That's something that the council can do, and, you know, if that's, that's the direction you want to go.
Well.
Okay.
I would want to, because I don't think they're unreasonable and unwarranted, I think we should look at them. So that's, that's, that's where I'm coming from. I know it's just... I know it's just a letter, I know nothing really happens with it, but, you know, our name's on it, the city's name's on it, the mayor's name's on it. I'd like it to be, you know, reflect what we're thinking.
All right. If we are done with this item, I would like to go to item...
Well, hold on, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Garcia.
So the recommendation was to follow there as is. Councilmember Brotman wants to change it, so somebody will need to make a motion, rather than say the items will not be implemented, and I'm looking for the statutory language, let me put it in here. Rather than say that the items would not be, will not be implemented, that further analysis will be conducted. And I'm going to turn to Ms. Yoon from my office to chime in and give the exact language that's in the statute.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of the City Council. The language that Mr. Garcia was referring to is Penal Code 93305. And if the city is going to take something under advisement, the language states that further analysis will be required. We have to provide an explanation and scope and parameters of what the city intends to do, and a timeframe for the matter to be prepared for discussion, and that the timeframe shall not exceed six months from the date of the publication of the grand jury report, which was July 31st.
So that would be the language that we're going to do further analysis on the request of the civil grand jury? So, yeah.
Can I move that we, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, if I may just add, as far as the recommendations that were made to all of the 88 cities, including the City of Glendale, only two of the recommendations are the ones that we disagree with. One is a food waste drop-off center, and the other one was the incentivizing separating food waste. So is it those two particular items that Councilmember Brotman would want further study on, or is it just food waste drop-off?
Well, it was those, and then the third one, I know they refer to the county, but, you know, we have, I mean, we have similar, I don't know, I don't care about the third one really, because I know they do refer to the county. We can just answer it that way. The first two are specific to us.
Ms. Yoon, may I ask your question, Mr. Brotman?
Yes, Mr.
What happens if we, if they don't like what we're saying? Is there some sort of a fine, or what's the worst-case scenario that happens if they don't like our reply?
Okay, anybody wants to answer?
Ms. Yoon will answer that.
My Yoon?
Those are just recommendations, again, made by the civil grand jury. There are no repercussions against the city.
Assuming they even read our letter, folks.
So I think that we should just submit the letter as is, and however, make, please, staff will follow through, as Mr. Golani has said tonight, on looking into and reporting back to us on a weekly drop-off, and maybe we won't do an incentive program, maybe we won't need one. But at least progressing with the programs that were talked about tonight and the drop-off center. And let's just end it there.
Okay. If that's the case, then we go to item...
Still need a motion, Mr. Mayor.
We need a motion.
Oh, right.
I did make a motion.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
I'll vote no.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Item 4D.
Item 4D, Glendale Water and Power Regarding Award of a Design-Built Contract for Pipeline Management Program, fiscal year 2020-2021, Phase 1 Project, RFP number 3866. One motion authorizing the interim city manager to enter into an executed design-built contract with WA RASIC Construction Company Incorporated of Long Beach, California for the pipeline management program, fiscal year 2020-2021, Phase 1 Project, RFP number 3866, in the amount of $4,114,285, plus a 15% contingency, in the amount of $617,142.75. Two would be resolution of appropriation for $700,000.
Interim City Manager, Rubik Golani.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I'm going to turn it over to Steve Zern, General Manager of Water and Power, to walk you through the report and then open it up to questions.
Mr. Zern.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is our annual pipeline replacement program. This is our maintenance and upkeep of our core distribution system. We have been doing this faithfully during my eight-year tenure here and making it a priority, starting with, some council members may remember, a $30 million bond issue that we invested entirely into the distribution system. And we value that system and will continue to maintain it on an annual basis. We set the tone for this in 2016 with a water master plan, and we then formulate our CIP program, our capital improvement program, each year based on that. And that's a document that has the entire system in there, evaluates condition, and sets priorities for the replacement. Our program consists mainly of replacing old pipeline and upgrading size, so generally taking four- and six-inch and going to eight-inch, putting in additional fire hydrants where necessary, making sure pressure is up for fire suppression, and keeping the water flowing reliably and safely. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any question from Mr. Zern?
I have a question, but I'll wait until we hear from the caller before I ask it.
All right, do we have a caller? Yes.
Yes, Mayor, we have one caller.
Okay, let's go to the caller.
Herbert Milano, thank you for waiting. You're live, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Mayor Agajanian, members of the City Council, my name is Herbert Milano. I'm speaking on this item because I am concerned about the future costs to ratepayers. I was looking at the city's comprehensive annual report for the end of 2019. On page 2010, it says that the city had 21 water main breaks last year alone, and 124 water main breaks in the last 10 years. So it seems to me as if the aging pipelines are quite a significant problem that the city has to address. Despite the bond issue, I want to know how many miles of pipeline are going to be replaced in the future, and what would be the cost to the ratepayers if we happen to have a substantial cost in the future in the hundreds of millions of dollars? Remember that the water ratepayers are much fewer than the electric ratepayers, so the burden to us is going to be much higher. I would like to request a couple of things, that we get a comprehensive report by GWP on the status of the water mains, and how many are over 40, 50, or 70 years old and need replacement? And the other one is how many qualified contractors are there doing this type of business in Los Angeles County? We only have two bidders for this, and I figure that the more competitive bidding we have, the better our potential future cost in controlling the cost of replacing this aging pipeline. And so I was wondering if the Glendale Water and Power has done a random survey of the average cost per linear foot in other cities? How do they compare to our $419 per linear foot that this particular contract entails? So I'm hopeful that we can get a full view of the overall cost and project that the Glendale Water and Power has. But I'm concerned of the future cost that the ratepayers are having. We need to have a clear and discerned cost analysis of what we will go to have to face in the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milano.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to address those comments? Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I apologize because the audio was a little sketchy there, but with regards to the hundreds of millions of dollars to the ratepayers, I guess I don't quite understand that. Fixing and maintaining your distribution system is one of the core responsibilities, along with maintaining the water quality that any water utility has. And we take that very seriously, and our budget reflects that. One of the things that we've done in our rate analysis and in our COSA analysis, cost-of-service analysis, is to move away from bond funding for these type of annual programs and gone to what we call a Pago Capital Program. And we've set aside substantial funds. You know, we've been doing millions of dollars like this each and every year. The speaker spoke of the main breaks. So he said, and I assume he's looking at the CAFER that has some level of statistic in there, he said there was 140 main breaks over the last 10 years, or 120 main breaks over the last 10 years. I know the last five years, we've had 60 main breaks. So let me tell you what the Water Research Foundation says about water utilities. An average water utility can expect to have somewhere near 20 to 25 main breaks a year per 100 miles of pipe. We have 400 miles of pipe, and we've averaged 12 main breaks for the last five years. Even at the speaker's 120, that's still 12 main breaks over the last 10 years. We did have a little bit of a spike in 2019. I can also tell you that the most significant main breaks that we've had in the city haven't been infrastructure-related, they've been man-made. They've been hit by contractors, not city contractors, they've been hit by contractors working in the city. So I think when you look at our main break record, it is very, very good. And if you compared it to other cities, you would see that if we aren't there, we're certainly better than many of those. I can tell you there's a couple of our neighbors who aren't doing so well. So, and part of the reason that we invest the time and money into our system is just for that very, very, very reason, to keep those main breaks down. So I disagree with the speaker. We will continue to spend a significant amount of money each year for the regular maintenance and upkeep of our pipes. Some of our pipes are a lot older than I would like them to be. I don't know that this type of program was carried on in the past 30, or 40, or 50 years ago. I certainly wouldn't promote having 99-year-old cast iron pipe in the ground, but we certainly can look at pipe that lasts, you know, 40, 50 years. So I think that we have done a really good job the last eight to 10 years, and we will continue to do that. It is part of what's built into our COSA, into our maintenance efforts each and every year.
Thank you, Mr. Zern. Since they came up, I just want to express my frustration, maybe, that we have only two contractors. That bothers me. I mean, my experience is not like this. I didn't work for government, of course, but I've been dealing with different projects for government. But I don't know why we have only two contractors. Hopefully, next time, our Glendale Water and Power Department will try to get more contractors to bid on any project which comes forward, and not to have just two contractors. With that...
And Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'm sorry, Mr. Kasakian.
Sure. Yeah, I also am kind of surprised that there's only two bidders on something that seems like, I don't, it doesn't seem like it's so specialized that only two people can do it, but I'm sure that there's reasons and explanations for this, given how the market is right now in terms of these trades. However, I do have a concern about the middle-end amounts. You know, when you look at RASIC and what they are charging versus JDC, you know, do we know how these two have gone through certain contingencies on other projects? Because I know that we're allocating a 15% contingency, but how can we be sure that, you know, the RASIC will not go through that entire 15%, which even though there's a 6.2% difference between the two bidders, when you take the 15% contingency into consideration, would put us significantly over 6.2%? These projects are done in phases, Mr. General Manager Steve Zern. Can we do, does a contract allow us, if we see that this company, RASIC, who we haven't used before, is burning through contingency, to put a stop to it? Or what measures do we have as council, as staff, to make sure that we are being responsible with the city's funds? I mean, 4.1 and 4.3 are almost $4.4 million. The difference is no joke.
So let me start, I can roll these two together, some of the concerns the mayor has had, and he's expressed those before. As you can see in the report, we had extensive outreach in this particular field for us, at least over the last seven to eight years. We've had very few bidders that have come in on this. In fact, the second firm here, Decidio, has done the last five projects. They've won the bid the last five times. So a positive out of this is we've got a new company that's bid for the first time, at least in my tenure here, and has come in with a favorable bid in comparison, and that gives us an opportunity to look at another competitor. Mr. Kasakian, I can tell you that 1819 and 1920 projects, 1819, zero change orders. 1920, we had one change order, and that was city-generated, because we, in cooperation with the Public Works Department, were notified that there was going to be a major resurfacing program. And instead of letting that street be resurfaced, we went ahead and put new mains in the street ahead of public work, so that we weren't digging the street up later. So that was money, in my opinion, well-spent. Other than that, no contractor generated change orders. I'll tell you, Mr. Kasakian, one of the beauties and why we've made this a pretty standard practice of the design-build that you see here, is there isn't a lot of finger-pointing that goes on. They have to design it, and they have to build it. So if it isn't designed right, or there's a problem with the design, they only have themselves to blame, and it's pretty hard to come back. But to answer your question, always legally, we have the right to cease a contract that we feel is not being implemented properly. I can tell you that we vetted WA RASIC pretty intently, and they have an excellent record in their other jobs. They're a Long Beach-based firm, has worked extensively in Long Beach and the coastal areas out there. They had an opportunity to come to Glendale. And, Mr. Mayor, sometimes we get firms that, they don't want to drive this far. The job's too big, or the job's too small. They don't want to pay prevailing wage. They can't meet the bond and insurance requirements. I know you've asked me some reasons, and we get some vague ones from them, but there's a lot of different things involved. But we were happy to see RASIC come out to Glendale. And I have personal experience with them, because they do a lot of work in the community I live in. And I can tell you from a customer service standpoint, they're excellent, and they had no idea who I was.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Zern, for that. I'll just, you know, I'll make the motion to approve this.
Second.
I want to say something, though.
All right.
Councilmember Brotman, I just want to say that, let's, again, keep our eyes on them. If we see that there is a burn rate through a contingency as a project progresses, that is something that will catch your attention or raise concerns, I, you'll let staff know, I know you'll let the appropriate staff know, but also let us, as the council, know as well.
Thank you, Mr. Brot.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment about Steve, about your response to the caller, Mr. Milano. I don't, you know, he's not saying we shouldn't be doing this. So I don't know what there is to disagree with him on. All he's saying is, he's looking for more visibility on, you know, what's coming down the pike, what's it going to cost us? He's looking for more accountability on, you know, how we're managing costs. That's all. He's asking for information. He said, you know, a comprehensive report on the status of water mains, you know, what do we need to play, to replace, how old is our pipes, you know, stuff like that. And he's asking for, you know, what have we done with benchmarking costs, and, you know, are we paying what neighboring cities are paying? That's all he's asking for. I don't see what there is to disagree with.
Well, Mr. Brotman, I was disagreeing, and again, if I heard things right, I was disagreeing that the system is in poor shape, that our breakage is somehow way above normal, that we're going to have to, as a result, invest hundreds of millions of dollars later, and all of those are the things I disagree with. His thoughts on planning, his thoughts on, do we have a comprehensive review? We do. We have a master plan that takes that all into consideration. I'm just simply saying, we're extremely proud of the system we have, and I don't think it's in disrepair. I don't think our main breaks, in fact, our main breaks tend to be below, way below average, and I think we continue to invest money wisely into our system. That's where I had the disagreement. The other things, I know, Mr. Milano, he is a supporter of infrastructure, investing in the infrastructure, and I appreciate that. It was the same way when I was Public Works Director in the street system. So I'm not disagreeing with that.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Zern. And I would like to add, to appreciate Mr. Milano's comments, because, you know, very few people are like one-person cults, so very few people study, review, and then render an opinion, or have an opinion and expresses his opinion, I appreciate. With this, is there a motion to move this item?
I'll move it.
Do we have second? Do we have second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Zern, thank you for the information.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, what's next, please?
Next item is city council and staff comments.
Okay, is there any comment?
Um, I just have one.
Ms. Devine?
Thank you, thank you. Um, I think we all got an email today, which was a, a very positive email from a, from Janelle. Was happened to be in Carr Park and with walking her dog. And she had a coyote encounter and she was very frightened and started screaming. And one of our parks and community services staff members came out and his name is Alvaro. And he chased the coyote away and then walked her to the entrance or the exit of the park. And she was very grateful and appreciative. And she said that she was so pleased to see that our staff is caring and compassionate. So I wanted to, to give a heads up to, uh, our Parks Department and Alvaro. If he's not listening, maybe one of his friends or someone can tell him that we appreciate his concern and his bravery today in the coyote encounter in Carr Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a few items.
Mr. Brod.
Yeah, um, let me start with, um, a letter that we all got from Superintendent Ekjian, um, who, uh, asking for us to support, uh, the Unified School District, Glendale Unified School District, and to bring back some students for in-person instruction. Um, for those of you who don't know in the public, um, the LA County Department of Health is giving limited, uh, a limited number of waivers to schools to bring back the youngest students up to grade two. If they show they can operate safely and they're, um, they're focusing on schools that have the highest needs. So, um, uh, our school system wants to apply for waiver. They need our support through a support letter. They apparently also need an okay from the, um, Teachers Association. So I just wanted to see if my colleagues agreed if we could get this on next week's agenda so that we can, um, uh, provide that support letter and so that they can apply for the waiver.
I will second it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, but I'd like to know what the Teachers Association says before I may take a stand that might be against their position, so.
Okay. And I think they need both of us. So if, um, well, we can maybe, we can, uh, if somebody could reach out and maybe get, get that information, um, either from Dr. Ekjian or from the, uh, or from the GTA.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Brodman, I will connect with Superintendent Ekjian.
Oh, you will contact here. You will contact her, right?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Golanyan will contact.
Okay, great. Um, the second one is, um, we also all got a letter a couple of weeks ago from State Center Jerry Hill on this bill FB 793, which bans the sale of flavored tobacco products in California. And, um, you know, we pulled, uh, we, we had a discussion item, uh, that where we were going to look at a ban ourselves, but we pulled that to see what happened with the legislation. That legislation passed, it was signed by the governor, but apparently, uh, the tobacco industry is collecting signatures to try to stop it from going into effect. Um, hopefully they won't be successful, but if they are, I'd like us to be ready to reintroduce the item that we postponed and, um, take this up at the local level if, if, if it doesn't, um, uh, get, uh, any progress at the state level. So, um, I think, um, if Mr. Garcia could say a word about that process, I think there's a deadline to get signatures coming up.
Uh, sure. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Brodman, as Councilmember Brodman noted, the, the opponents of that particular bill are circulating signatures to, uh, put that on a referendum. And if they get the signature, it will not come back until, uh, on the ref, on the state ballot until, uh, 2022. And during that time, that legis, piece of legislation will be suspended. So there has been a request made to, for cities that were considering the local ban to reconsider that. So I think that the, the deadline that they have is till midnight in November. So if the side does get a second and they do get the signatures to put that on the ballot, then per the council direction, we would then bring it back for consideration.
Okay. And do we need, does anybody need to second that or can we just?
Yeah, we would need a second for that. We would need a second for that.
I'll second it.
Okay, okay, thanks. Then what's the date?
November 20th, November 26th.
Okay, so we don't have, we can wait till then, right? And then we'll see what happens. Okay.
We'll, we'll monitor and bring it back if it gets the signatures.
Okay. And then, um, two other, two other small items. So, um, I wanted to ask about slow streets. Um, I've gotten some questions from people asking if we're still taking applications and considering additional, uh, locations. Um, I wonder if, uh, Mr. Calvert is there or somebody could address that? And also maybe say, maybe just say a word about, um, you know, it, it's probably early, but we should start thinking about what happens, you know, with this, uh, after, after COVID. And maybe, you know, late, late winter, early spring, we can start talking about, um, you know, what, what the alternatives are. Because I, I'm hearing, um, that people like it. Um, but it is kind of kludgy. It, it, it doesn't look that great. So I guess the question will be, you know, what do we do going forward to make it, um, you know, fit into the fabric, I guess, of the city a little bit better than the way we have it now?
Mr. Calvert is here.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Um, we have ceased taking new applications. This is partially because we have used up all of the funding, um, that we had obtained to, to go, to move forward with this project. We still do have a number of applications. I don't know the number off the top of my head. I would like to say it's somewhere between 30 and 40 that we have not yet installed. Um, barricades are in very high demand right now. Uh, so we are waiting for the delivery of our next batch of barricades. We do have another 150 or so signs that we are waiting to deploy. So once we get those barricades, we'll be able to go out with the rest of those. Um, for the time being, we, we don't have any additional funding to continue expanding for the project. Um, but as Councilmember Brodman alluded to, we would like to be able to bring an item back to council, probably after the first of the year, maybe sometime in the end of winter or beginning of spring, and consider some other alternatives of how we could either, uh, morph this project into something else or if it's just something that we entirely seize altogether. Uh, so we are currently working on some options, looking around at other cities to see what they have done and how some have turned it into a permanent or a longer, uh, longer term temporary, um, element and fixture to their cities. So we plan on bringing something back next year.
Okay, thank you. So if somebody asks, I should say that we are not taking additional applications right now.
Correct, we are not. We have updated the website, uh, because of that, uh, to reflect that. So right now we have enough signs to process the rest of those applications and we do have some signs we need to go out and replace that have been damaged.
Okay, thank you. And just the last thing is, you know, next week is, is Election Day and there are a lot of people like me who are concerned about potential unrest and even violence after, after the election. Um, I hope not, but, um, I just thought it would be a good idea if our chief could maybe, uh, say a word or two about any, anything that he can share on threat assessment and contingency plans.
First, Mr. Chief, uh, Mr. Chief Pobolitis, did you receive anything in this respect? Police got anything that there will be some violence or anything that you heard of? If you can share with us.
Mr. Mayor, members of council and Councilmember Brodman, uh, certainly. Uh, right now, I'll tell you, there is no specific threat or concern for Glendale, but like everybody, we're very much aware of the, the concern community wide. I will tell you, there is a serious regional planning on. Glendale is part of that regional planning. Uh, Glendale also does its own planning internally, uh, to make sure that we have adequate staffing during the elections. Like everybody, uh, you know, we kind of look at cities as supporting democracy and making sure that democracy can happen. And the police department is certainly there to make sure that that also happens. I can tell you, there'll be regional command posts stood up and at the county level, uh, the county's emergency operations center up there, we will have connections to those. We are also making sure that we have a few extra police officers on, on staff and we also have our internal contingency plans. But there's nothing specific to Glendale that is of concern for either voting or after the election at this point.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Where we are now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Kasakian.
I just want to thank our city's firefighters for the great job that they did putting out, um, the fire that, uh, broke out above Brand, around the Brand Park area. And, you know, given these times when we're seeing these brush fires, um, across the state, these wild, developing into wildfires, uh, I just want to say how grateful I am for having the type of, uh, fire department that we do. Um, thank them for putting out the fire and making sure that everything is under control. And continue to urge our residents to be vigilant, to be safe, uh, to be particularly careful. Even though the weather is cooling down, there is still the danger of fires at this time of year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, um, you know, over the last few months, uh, perhaps the last year, we've had an incredible amount of requests for reports and action by staff. And I have honestly lost track of what's out there. And I think we, as a council, need to have a discussion on how we would advise and recommend staff to prioritize those requests. Um, do we want to put some, is it first come, first served? Is it rotation amongst council members as to, we did one of Brodmans, we did one of mine, we, next is Devine? Um, the staff have a preference as to ones they can get out sooner rather than later? I think it's a discussion we need to have, just to find out what's on our to-do list and find some way, and there's a lot, you know, there's a lot. We had two or three just this meeting. Go through that list as a council and decide how we would prioritize, uh, direction to staff as to which ones we want first, which ones are time sensitive, which ones that become moot or not so relevant as, uh, the weeks and months go by. Um, and I would ask that that have priority. So that come back as soon as possible so we can deal with what we have out there and put some sort of, uh, order to all our requests for action.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That's a good suggestion.
Mr. Golanyan?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, member of city council, Councilwoman Najarian. I truly appreciate those comments. Um, recently I forwarded you a copy of what we call council request tracker. As of January 2018, we have completed, staff has completed, uh, over 60, I believe, somewhere around 65, 66 items, which is phenomenal considering, um, our operations and our routine work that has to be done in the city. Uh, but as it stands, we have another 55 items that needs to be addressed, some form or shape. And we do our best to set priorities best as we can. Uh, perhaps we do the low hanging fruits, so to speak. Uh, otherwise there are items can, that can be combined or we had already planned to bring forward to council. So we wait for the culmination of that, that, those items. But it'll be very, very beneficial, both for council and for staff, to have some sort of guidelines as to which one, uh, carries higher priority. And I'd be more than happy to share that, uh, in public, uh, at a council, uh, meeting with you when you please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Now the next item.
Mr. Mayor, really quickly.
Mr. Kasakian.
I think that, I also think that's a good suggestion, but I'm not asking to speak to, so I can echo what my colleagues have already said. Um, I also want to, I know that there's a, a little bit of rearranging of the items this evening. So, um, before it's too late, related to an item, but not quite, I, I want to speak about, and, and I'm sorry that I'm bringing this up right on the tails of what Councilmember Najarian said. But in addition to the resolution I will consider in a few moments, uh, to, to recognize, um, the Artsakh Republic and urging our US leaders to do the same. I would like our, uh, city treasurer, uh, to look into and report back to us on the possibility of how we can divest, uh, any interests that the city may have financially from the Republic of Turkey, from the Republic of Azerbaijan. Um, you know, when I was a young, uh, student, uh, here in Glendale, I remember, uh, looking, following and, and having great admiration for our then, um, governor, uh, Governor George Duclayian, who, uh, took the lead and supported the divestment efforts from South Africa, uh, for, for the state, uh, because of South Africa's abhorrent, uh, policy of apartheid. Um, I think that, you know, given the, the world we live in today and the circumstances that we find ourselves in, it is the right thing to do as Americans to make sure that the investments that we have, uh, as a city, on behalf of our taxpayers and citizens, comport to our values as Americans and our shared principles, regardless of what side of the political aisle we're on. I'm a Democrat, uh, I make, uh, no, I don't try to hide it. Governor George Duclayian was a Republican. Uh, ultimately, doing the right thing knows no partisan affiliation. And I think here in the city where we're taking the investment dollars of our residents, um, we should in the very least make sure that our investments are aligned with human rights values.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Mayor Agajanian?
One second, Mr. Golanyan?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, member of city council, Councilmember Kasakian. Thank you for bringing that item up again. As a matter of fact, we are working on a report that will come, was scheduled to come back to council on December 8th with a resolution. And we will definitely get feedback from our city treasurer.
Thank you.
Um, Mayor Agajanian?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, one second.
Mayor Agajanian, it's Rafi Manukian, the city treasurer. He is online on.
Online, okay. Mr. Manukian online, so he wants to comment.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you very much for, uh, taking my call at this time. I think, uh, the issue that has been raised, uh, is of concern to me as well. And I want to thank Councilmember Kasakian for bringing it up. I think it's timely and it's an urgent matter. And I can assure the council and assure our community that I will not going forward, not be investing in any firms that have, or any issuers that issue bonds that do business or any sort of, uh, involvement in Turkey or Azerbaijan. And I have identified already, uh, four firms, the four issuers that we are currently holding, which I will bring back, uh, during, uh, during the next two weeks to, uh, to, to have a decision from the council and to see the financial ramifications of, of the action. And some of those firms are very well known to the community, uh, like Exxon, who, uh, who has been involved with, uh, with Turkey and Azerbaijan for over 100 years. We have Johnson &amp; Johnson, who has Turkey Consumer Group. Pfizer, who, who, uh, uh, produces 75%, 75% of its products in Turkey. And Toyota Motor, believe it or not, they have the Toyota Motor manufacturing in Turkey. So these are, uh, some of the, some of the issuers that I have identified that I will bring back in a couple of weeks and, uh, and we will discuss at length at that time. But I want to, again, assure our community and assure the council that going forward from February 27th, no investment, there will be no investment with any firms or any issuers that have any sort of dealings with these aggressor and genocidal, uh, countries. So thank you very much for the talk.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manukian. Okay, uh, I guess we go forward now. A community events announcement, do we have any?
Yes, Mayor, we have three callers on the line.
So let's listen to them.
Lucy Petrosian, thank you for waiting so long. Um, you're live.
Yes, hi. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Agajanian, members of Glendale City Council, staff and residents. My name is Lucy Petrosian and I'm the chairperson of the ANCA Glendale Chapter. ANCA Glendale would like to thank the Glendale City Council for being responsive towards our demands from last Tuesday's city council meeting. As you all know, Armenia and Artsakh have been under attack for over a month now. Starting from September 27th, our cities have been destroyed and we have too many fallen soldiers and civilians who were killed as a result of Turkey and Azerbaijan's war crimes. Two days ago, Azerbaijan violated the Third Humanitarian ceasefire agreement. This only shows that the violence will only stop if the self-determination of the people of Artsakh is recognized globally. But we must start this movement locally. To stand with Armenian-American residents, we urge the city of Glendale to pass the proposed resolution that recognizes Artsakh as an independent republic. But that's not. But that's not enough. The city of Glendale needs to make a firm stance against investing in regimes such as Turkey and Azerbaijan, who are notorious for their war crimes against ethnic minorities, including their current attempts to ethnically cleanse the people of Artsakh. We demand that this city actively divest from the governments of Turkey and Azerbaijan. In a city that warmly welcomes people from all backgrounds, we can have, we cannot have investments in countries that are continuously terrorizing its people and other ethnic minorities. We also demand that the city of Glendale work to ensure that this city becomes a place that does not have any products made in Turkey and Azerbaijan. ANCA Glendale, along with other organizations, have been visiting stores to inform them that consumers do not want their pocket money to benefit dictatorships who are killing our people. We humbly ask that Glendale City Council to work with us on this initiative. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, Lucy. Next caller, please.
Helen Mallory, Helen, you're live?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Helen Mallory. I first lived in Glendale from 1979 to 81, and then moved back here with my family in 1995 for the open spaces and schools. We are blessed with an abundance of wildlife in Glendale and places to recreate away from factories and heavy industry. I believe that building a power plant in the middle of a wilderness area is a mistake that will harm Glendale and our wildlife long into our future. Animals we see in our neighborhood and on our motion-activated cameras include bobcat, mountain lion, bear, coyote, deer, fox, raccoon, opossum, and squirrel. I knew I was a real Californian when I saw a bobcat leap up into my palm tree to catch a squirrel for her family dinner. One neighbor recently enjoyed a visit by a bear and was told by rangers to investigate it, that Glen Oaks Canyon is part of a wildlife corridor linking the San Gabriel Mountains and the Santa Monica Mountains. With the recent massive fires in our hills, these wildlife corridors are more important than ever, and since these function as an island, native habitat between heavily developed areas, it's important not to industrialize this area. We have carnivorous top-tier predators in this area, including mountain lions and bears, bobcats, and coyotes. These predators are essential to keep the natural balance of wildlife in the area. At night, we see various species of bats swooping down to feed on our insects, and then we join in and hooting with owls in our neighborhood trees. These are part of the wild range, wide range of flying critters, birds, and raptors here, hawks, peregrine falcons, eagles, and turkey buzzards, as well as the local, many local and migrating birds each season. I was overjoyed to see a stand of native milkweed, which is the only food that the endangered butterfly eats while in the caterpillar stage. It is located very near to the landfill. We want to do everything we can to protect this wonderful, wonderful variety of wildlife, and building a large power plant in this location will be very harmful to Glendale's natural treasures. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Mary, you're live, Mary, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. We are now in very hard times because of the pandemic. I'm going to urge you to listen to the rent burden tenants of the city and add on the agenda and reconsider to extend the rent fees ordinance. Last week, you made your consideration based on inaccurate information provided to you. Last week, the city attorney stated, I would like to know that LA County rent fees will also expire end of the month, and other cities also have let it go. Both of those statements by the city attorney were erroneous. LA County rent fees is until end of November 30th. I called LA County three times to confirm. The city attorney provided wrong information to the city council. Furthermore, City of LA had extended the rent fees for one year in May, and it is very interesting that the city attorney did not mention that to the city council, and there are many other cities as well who have extended their rent fees, like the city of San Jose. Secondly, Mr. Brockman provided data from the apartment list that supposedly rent has gone down 7.5%, adding that, I don't know if it is accurate. I don't know why he would present the data if he is not sure of its accuracy. First of all, the data is for new vacant apartment units. It does not reflect the rent paid by current tenants. The rent fees affects majority of the current old tenants, not new tenants. Most new tenants have one-year lease. The data he provided was misleading and has nothing to do with tenants who are already paying their rent. Thirdly, also last week, Mrs. Divine stated that the Apartment Association had contacted her and told her they want to keep their tenants. Then she should have, she should not have any problem extending the rent fees if that is exactly what they want. Otherwise, what guarantee do we have? I know landlords who have increased rent during the past month. Again, if she is convinced with the guarantee, then there should be no problem to safeguard the tenants during this pandemic. Why should she be against the rent fees, then? This is not the time for extra profits. 90% of tenants are paying rent but cannot afford rent increase at these times. Mayor Agajanian, since the evidence presented not to extend the rent fees was based on inaccurate information, Mr. Mayor, you have to correct this mistake in these very hard times when no one else is making any extra profit. This is not about me, this is for all the tenants of Glendale, this is about humanity over extra profits. Other cities have extended rent fees like LA County, LA Cities, San Jose, and other cities, and City of Glendale should also reconsider the difficulty of Glendale tenants and extend the rent fees. And the city attorney should make a correction. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the call, Mary. Next caller.
Saro Kerkunyan, you're live, Saro?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, Saro, you're live.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Agajanian and Honorable Councilmembers Divine, Najarian, Kasakyan, and Brockman. My name is Saro Kerkunyan. I am a proud resident of Glendale, and I currently serve on the Board of Governors of the Armenian Bar Association, and I am a co-chair of the association's Artsakh Law Initiative Committee. I appear before you tonight to advocate for your support of Agenda Item 8A, that the city of Glendale recognize the independence of the Republic of Artsakh. About two years ago, I had the honor of appearing before you to ask for your vote in favor of renaming two blocks of Maryland Avenue to Artsakh Avenue. At that time, despite the recommendation of the city's planning commission against the renaming and the opposition of some business owners along Maryland Avenue, this council recognized the enormous contributions of its Armenian residents to the city and took a trailblazing step and approved the renaming of Maryland Avenue to Artsakh Avenue. Tonight, from Stepanaque to Washington DC, from Yerevan to Moscow, the world again looks to you, you are the honorable council members of the city of Glendale, to take another bold step as you did two years ago. A bold step that affirms that the city of Glendale supports the Armenian people's right to live in freedom rather than oppression. A bold step that the city of Glendale supports the democratic institution of the Republic of Artsakh over the tyranny of Baku. A bold step that vows for the right of self-determination of the people of Artsakh. A bold step that the city of Glendale recognizes that the people of Artsakh have, for nearly three decades, fulfilled all of the requirements of statehood under international law and deserve their seat at the table of nations. A bold step that the city of Glendale condemns the barbaric attacks of genocidal ethnic cleansing against the civilian populations of Artsakh that are taking place right now since the aggression by Azerbaijan began one month ago. And finally, a bold step that proclaims that the city of Glendale recognizes that the road to peace is through the recognition of the independence of the Artsakh Republic. I call on you, as the voice of the tens of thousands of Glendale residents you represent, to honor their contributions to this great city and support that which is of paramount importance to them, and vote in favor of the resolution recognizing Artsakh independence. Thank you, council members, for your time, and thank you, Mayor Agajanian.
Thank you, Mr. Kerkunyan. Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Mayor, I have a caller, I can't see if it's for this portion yet, they haven't typed up anything. If we can wait for a couple minutes, or at least 30 seconds.
Okay, I will wait for 30 seconds, since you're that precise, I'm willing to wait for 30 seconds.
Okay, Mayor, it's for the next item, it's for an action item.
Yes, please read it to.
Eight, action item, 8A Management Services Regarding Consideration of Recognition of Republic of Artsakh Independence, one, resolution recognizing independence of Republic of Artsakh.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Golani.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, this report and the attached resolution, as was read into the record, is presented to you in response to City Council's request for consideration to recognize the Republic of Artsakh as an independent nation.
Thank you. Anybody, no report?
No, sir.
Okay. Do we have any call for this item?
Yes, yes, Mayor, I do.
Okay, let's go to the callers.
Annie Dashtoyan, you're live, Annie?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Agajanian and members of the city council. My name's Annie Dashtoyan, I am representing Nus Society. On behalf of Nus Society, I would like to thank Mayor Agajanian and Councilmembers Najarian for speaking to our Glendale community about the Armenian cause and this resolution. I've been a resident of Glendale since I was six. I'm proud of this community and how it always makes sure all of our voices are heard, and I value the city of Glendale for always amplifying the voices and needs of the Armenian community. Our organization is here to support the resolution on the recognition of Artsakh's independence. We really want to thank city manager John Tostalian for introducing this resolution. Without such recognition, the Armenian people will continue to face yet another genocide. To echo the Armenian president's remarks on that adoption of such resolutions and international enforcement will ensure competent resolutions of the problem in the region, we really need to put an end to all of this. We kindly ask the city council to pass the resolution on the independence of Artsakh, and thank the honorable council members for bringing this to the board and for their ongoing support of our community. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Dashtoyan. Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Mayor, I have no other callers.
Great, okay. Is there any comments by my colleague?
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Mr. Najari.
I mean, obviously, I think everyone in the world has seen what has transpired in the past month, and that was the, the attack of a well-coordinated military on the residents of Artsakh by the dictatorial regime of Aliyev in Azerbaijan, coordinated with Erdogan's Turkish army. Mix in a few mercenaries from ISIS, a terrorist group that was fighting in Syria, as well as some Pakistani radicals who have offloaded the region and are attacking a small peaceful enclave that centuries and millennia have, has been an Armenian region, an Armenian region where, even before Christianity, where the cultures and customs and language have been developed. It's truly astonishing, we're on the verge of genocide number two in the last 100 years against a peaceful Armenian population. I've been to Artsakh several times, and I've met several times with then-President Bako Sahakyan and the new President Rai Karujunya. It's a country, they have a parliament, they have a democratically elected president along with members of parliament, they have universities and schools and hospitals and concert halls and, and much more, and they're being, they're being wiped out as we speak, literally being wiped out. And it is important for us to be clear in our position as a city with 100,000 Armenian residents, that we recognize the independence of Artsakh. Now, that's not going to fight any battles, that's not gonna, you know, deter an Israeli-made or Turkish-made drone from slamming into our schools and offices there. But it's a statement of support that we, in the city of Glendale, support the independence, the integrity, and the sovereignty of Artsakh. And, you know, just driving around the city, you can't, I mean, it's a sea of Armenian and Artsakh flags, and our residents are deeply committed, they're, as, as someone mentioned, I think Mr. Kasakyan mentioned, we're, it's, it's on all of our skin at this point, we're hooked to Twitter, trying to see what the latest casualty reports are, and I think it's the right thing to do, to recognize them. So, I know I don't have to ask my colleagues for, for support, I know where, where you all stand, and you stand on the side of righteousness, and I know we're doing the right thing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any other comment by my colleagues?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kerkunyan.
I, I'd be happy to second this resolution that was brought forth by Councilmember Najarian, and I echo everything he said, and I think I've said more than my share on this topic. There's one thing that I, I hope that we can maybe rectify, correct, I know that we've already signed this, and it just only struck my, caught my attention now, and it's the very last line of the resolution, where it refers to it as stability in the South Caucasus region. And just so people understand how we arrive in the places we do, South Caucasus or Trans-Caucasia is a rendering, a Latin rendering of a Russian term to describe that area, a nation and an entity that has come into that area sees it as its sphere of influence. The proper geographic name of that area, including parts of what the Azerbaijan considers Azerbaijan, is the Armenian Highland. The Armenian Highland is some, is a geographical area that dates to antiquity, it's the proper name of it geographically, it is the place where Noah's Ark came to rest according to scripture, and I would prefer to say the stability to the Armenian Highlands region, and if need be in parentheses, you can say the South Caucasus. But when we start using the terms that are hoisted upon us, much like how names are changed geographically during this war, as soon as Azerbaijani troops advanced, Google Maps would revert traditional Armenian names of towns and villages to Azeri names and Turkified names. I think names do matter, and history matters, and I would like to see us do that on copies of the resolution that we put out for public consumption.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments, or we go?
Yes, Mr. Brock.
Yeah, and I, I haven't said nearly as much as some of my colleagues on this, but I wanted to mention one thing, I was at a YWCA event the other day, I think many of you were probably there, the Purple Tie Awards, and Father Mosesian gave a talk, and he, and he talked about what was happening in Artsakh, and Tara Peterson, the executive director, asked him a question, she said, "How can non-Armenians help?" And I was sitting there, you know, waiting for that answer, and what Father Mosesian said was interesting, he said, "Well, that's thinking about it the wrong way. We're all Armenians, just like we're all Latino, we're all Jews, we're all blacks." So, I just wanted to say, as somebody who has never been to Artsakh or Armenia, who has no family there, who doesn't speak the language, I also am an Armenian, and I wholeheartedly support this resolution.
Thank you. Ms. Divine? Or I can go?
Well, there's, well, Mayor and my colleagues, you know, there's, should be no doubt that I am in support of this resolution. I, I, when I look on Facebook or in, or emails and see faces of young I, when I look on Facebook or in, or emails and see faces of young Armenian boys that have, that have been killed, that were waiting to go to the American University of Armenia and instead, instead went to fight and lost their lives. This is a critical time and a very sad time. And I think the more support we can give to our Armenian friends and families, the better we are. And so I am, of course, in full support of this resolution.
Thank you. Well, I speak about issues for twenty-one years every night. I don't want to say much tonight. But I was there when nineteen ninety-four war was going on, and I saw cemeteries full of young people who were killed, and also elderly, of course. Thirty thousand people in the first war, first nineteen ninety-three, ninety-four Artsakh war has been died. And now, over 1,000 Armenians are killed in Artsakh. It's recent since, starting from September twenty-seventh. As everybody probably is aware, the first time, Mr. Lavrov, Foreign Minister of Russia, tried to bring a peace or resolution to the area, but Azerbaijan did not follow. So then, the second time, President of France, Mr. Macron, tried to bring a peaceful solution to this area, temporary, temporary ceasefire, actually, not solution, ceasefire on October eighteen. But that did not hold because Azerbaijan kept shooting Armenians. And the third time, this past Friday, Mr. Pompeo tried to bring a, you know, ceasefire, and that did not hold. As you may know, France, United States, and Russia are members of Minsk group who are looking into this matter for almost past thirty years. And they could not come up with any solution because Azerbaijan is saying that they have to push all Armenians from Artsakh, which is ancestors' land. Armenians been there for thousands of, thousands of years. It's not that they are, they're new. So however, this is the situation, and I'm glad that we have this resolution in front of us. And I will support this. So with that, if there is no comments, I go roll call, please.
Councilmember Brockman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakin.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for passing this important resolution. Okay, what's next? Oh, I'm sorry. Now, I would like to go to item, Mr. Ajemian. Item D, because we have, the person who has to join us is joining us from New York. And, you know, this time it's eleven thirty-seven in New York. Let's do item D first, and we go back to our other items a little bit later.
Eight D, Community Development Regarding Verdugo Wash Visioning Consultant Recommendations and Funding Allocation. Motion awarding a contract to Milk and authorize the interim city manager to execute a professional service agreement with I-Milk in the amount of four hundred forty thousand for, for the Verdugo Wash Visioning Study. Two resolution appropriating appropriation of two hundred thousand in Measure M funding to be used towards the Verdugo Wash Visioning Study for a contract total of four hundred forty thousand.
Mr. Gulanyan.
Mr. Mayor.
How?
Mr. Mayor.
Who's calling?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Najarian, Councilmember Najarian, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As, as was read, this regards the Verdugo Wash. My wife has a property within five hundred feet of said wash. Therefore, I am conflicted and will not participate in the discussions regarding this. I will sign off. And do I need to sign off, Mr. City Attorney? Can I leave this playing in the background?
Councilman Najarian, ISD staff will put you in the lobby as soon as your recusal.
Okay. Mr. Gulanyan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council. This is one of the very exciting projects that staff's currently working on. It's a first step in reimagining and revitalizing nine miles of Verdugo Wash. And I'm going to invite Bradley Calvert, our Assistant Director of Community Development, to present the report.
Mr. Calvert.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. As, as discussed, we are here in front of you today with two recommendations. The, the first is for the recommended consultant team to work on the Verdugo Wash Visioning Study. The second is for appropriation of Measure M funds to expand the scope. Both of these, we will walk you through this evening, the consultant selection process and how we arrived at the staff recommendation, who that team is, and then what staff is recommending for an expanded scope and how that additional funding could be used to create essentially a better vision for the Verdugo Wash. Just as a quick refresher, as we're all aware, this is a tributary of the Los Angeles River. It's a nine-and-a-half-mile-long flood control channel. It's connected to eighteen total neighborhoods in the city of Glendale, so this does impact a very broad cross-section of the city, but also a great opportunity to connect these neighborhoods. It's being considered as a resource for open space, but also an opportunity for improved mobility. It has been defined and identified as a primary bicycle route in the Bicycle Transportation Plan. For the visioning, we entered this with the consideration of the pedestrian and cyclist improvements, really serving as a multimodal corridor with the idea that it's going to connect people and places. As part of the discussions back earlier this year during the budgeting process, to consider this also as an opportunity for open space, whether that's open space that can be developed adjacent to the wash, over the wash, or in any other fashion. Part of the scope also included elements of habitat restoration. Where can we bring back the natural habitat that existed once before, where this concrete channel is located? That obviously comes with elements of sustainability, so there were components of that that we were considering as part of this original scope. And ultimately, really, this entire vision, all of these elements, all of these features, packaging into what we would describe as creating a very unique identity and a memorable experience for the city of Glendale. This is really an opportunity to create something that can create civic pride, create something that serves an attraction not only for our residents, but in the region. And as our recommended consultant has noted, maybe this is even something that can attain a national attraction, national attention. Go to the next slide. It's stuck.
Go on, try again.
There we go. So for the consultant selection process, the RFP was issued back on August tenth of 2020. We posted this on the city of Glendale website. We also posted this on the American Planning Association website, where they do have an opportunity for free listings for RFPs, really trying to capture that attention of planning, urban design, and landscape architecture firms. Staff also identified approximately forty firms that we were interested in seeing what they may be able to bring to the table for this project. So we emailed them directly, the RFP and the invitation to participate. The RFP closed about a month later on September ninth, so we gave them nearly a full month to put together their responses. I would say, having been involved in projects of kind of similar scope, similar kind of gravity, this was easily probably the, really the most exciting RFP process I've been engaged with. We received a total of twenty-one submittals. This exceeded our expectations. One of those was disqualified. Essentially, they had submitted for supplementary services, which is not what we were asking for in the RFP. But we saw firms from all across the country. This was an incredibly competitive process. The firms that participated in this were some of the leading firms in the country, if not the world. Six of the firms are recognized by, there's an online publication titled Architectizer. They put out a list of essentially groundbreakers, fifteen landscape architect firms that we should know. Six of those applied. Ultimately, we interviewed five of them. Four firms have been recognized by the American Society of Landscape Architects as the Firm of the Year. Three of those we also interviewed. And, and many of these firms have received countless awards from the Urban Land Institute, American Institute of Architects, American Society of Landscape Architects, a number of different organizations. Really kind of highlighting some of those projects, firms that competed and worked on the High Line in New York were some that were, that participated. Railroad Park in Birmingham, Alabama, and also several firms that have participated in some of the efforts with the Los Angeles River. We did see many of them participate in this process as well. So the submittal review criteria included looking at the experience of the firm and the team. We wanted to see projects that were of potential similar scope or similar kind of creativity that we were looking for. We wanted to see built and conceptual projects. As much as this is something that we want to see put into the ground and made, we also want to see how creative these firms can be and what kind of creativity they can bring to the firm. We looked at the expertise of the key personnel, and that included the prime and the subconsultant teams, their overall level of creativity, quality of presentation graphics, recognizing that we are at a visioning stage right now. Those graphics are going to be key in terms of marketing and selling this vision to both the community as well as stakeholders and those who may be able to help us fund implementation. So graphic representation will be key. And then overall completeness of, of, of the response and the proposal. Were they providing us with all the information that we needed, needed to, to assess their firm and their ability to, to work on this project? We also looked at fee proposal. We went in this with a fixed dollar amount in the beginning with $240,000. So we asked, based on our scope, what they could fit into, into that dollar amount. So for the scoring, you can see how this broke down. There were eight total firms that we chose to interview, and really that came from, there was kind of a clean break, if you will, between number eight and number nine. These firms, you saw a little bit of a gap in the scoring, if you will. So we, we selected the following eight firms: Milk, Olin Studio, Burger Partnership, MBBJ, and a partnership with Landscape Architects, James Corner Field Operations, Balmory Associates, Tom Leader Studio, and the Office of James Burnett, and all advanced to the interview stage.
Sorry, excuse me.
Yes.
In front of Milk, there is a sign. You don't read that?
The exclamation point, no. We, we do have the, our, our recommended firm on here to maybe answer any questions, if any do, any do come up from, from this discussion of the firms. The interviews were conducted over a period of two days, October seventh and eighth. The interview composition really was, we asked the, the firm to provide us with about a ten-minute presentation, tell us a bit about their firm and their approach, and, and explain kind of a comparable project that they felt was befitting and representative of how they would pursue and approach the Verdugo Wash. There were questions from the panel as well, and then an open question period for the firms. Both the submittal review and the interviews was conducted by a six-person panel. There were two members from the Planning Division, one from Mobility, one from Urban Design, one from Public Works, and then one from Parks and Services. And that was consistent both through the submittal review process as well as the interviews. From this process, it was identified that Milk Landscape Architecture and Urban Design was the highest-scoring firm by the time we finished evaluating both their RFPs and their, their interview process. This, again, as I mentioned, was extremely competitive. I think in some ways, this, this bar chart kind of does some disservice to the teams that did not make it into the top three necessarily. Any of these firms are extremely well-qualified to be able to work on a project of this scope and scale, and we were very enthusiastic to be able to meet with any of them. And with, with Milk, what we identified was a level of creativity that we felt was very befitting and necessary for this project to deliver new ideas and a new vision. Their graphic representation was exceptional. The overall energy that the team brought to the, the interview process as well as their submittal was, was, I wouldn't say unparalleled. There were others that were also very excited, but they, they had a personality and energy that we greatly appreciated. Their public engagement, whether it was from traditional public engagement they've done in prior projects, we found to be thoughtful. It could generate excitement amongst the community and stakeholders. They also had many ideas in there that we appreciated in terms of how we approach stakeholder and public engagement in a time like this, knowing that we're going to have to use digital resources and several other tools. As you can see, Milk just, just eked out some of those other top two firms. James Corner Field Operations, they were the designers of the High Line, also an exceptional firm. We would say, again, you know, Milk, just with their kind of creativity, just slightly eked out on, on this, on that kind of element. Burger Partnership, another great firm, another firm that we thought brought a lot to the table as well. Some of the discussions there is that we were missing just a little bit in terms of the graphic representation, those renderings, those graphics that we're going to need to use to be able to market and sell this project. So overall, what we found is that Milk brought the complete package that we were really looking for. We were very challenged to find anything that we did not like with them. We felt that they, they had really exhibited themselves the best from all the, all of the kind of metrics that we were evaluating their team on. So just a few examples that we wanted to provide of their projects. Pier Ninety-seven in New York, this is a great public open space process, or project. They've just completed their design development stage for this, really looking at creating essentially a public living room as, as part of the open space network along the Hudson River. Another example, and I am not going to try to pronounce this, we do have the firm on the, on the call, Jerry Van Icke from Milk, as well as the project manager, Sabina Ramos, and Ian Hampson is also on, on the call to answer any questions. But we also felt that this project really embodied both the mobility element that we're really looking for, that pedestrian and cyclists, but the creativity in design and open space, really creating kind of a fluid space. We are working in a very rigid environment with the Verdugo Wash, so being able to kind of test and challenge that to create something that is a little more creative and fluid, this was a good project example that we had seen. Also looking at this riverfront park here in Madrid, Spain, again, really demonstrating their ability to work at the scope and scale that we're looking for, the ability to create inspired public spaces, spaces that attract people. That's going to be very important for potential segments of this route, especially as you get into a more urban environment. Toronto Central Waterfront, another, another good example. This project, we really like the, you can see it's sort of a, kind of a wavy bridge, if you will. Again, that kind of fluid response to design, something that's creative, something that's unique, something that's not seen everywhere. And Governor's Island Park, Jerry Van Icke serving as kind of the design director for this visioning. This is a great project in New York, a great open space, again, really exhibiting kind of a fluid design, changes in topography, great revitalization of the island itself. And then one that we kind of wanted to really stop and acknowledge here, and this is here in California, in West Sacramento, the project The Barn. We really felt that this fully embodied the kind of creativity and, and thought process challenging that we were really looking for. Someone who could, could bring in new concepts, new ideas, and most importantly, that this project, I guess I would describe this as a pavilion. Jerry may describe it differently, really serves as a people-oriented place. This has become a magnet for West Sacramento and the Bridge District. It is a highly creative design, a public space, if you will, as well as a physical object that's there. And again, bringing those kind of opportunities to this project, looking at this beyond just something that may be a pedestrian and cyclist corridor, but seeing how we could activate particular spaces or create unique designs for them. So as part of this, we are also asking council to consider expanding the scope as well as allocating Measure M funds to support that expanded scope. This expanded scope would look at enhanced hydrology, hydrology analysis. This is, this will be important for us to be able to create a vision that is tenable, one that we can actually take to stakeholders. This will be a multi-year effort to implement this project. It's going to take many phases. And, and being able to hash out some of those technical details early on is going to be key. We, we did not quite have enough in that original scope, we believe, as we look back on this. Understanding that these concrete channels are designed to the nth degree, if you will, any kind of change, any kind of tampering with that is going to change its ability to perform as a flood control channel. So being able to fully understand the impacts of what we propose, the limitations of what we can do is going to be key. Otherwise, there would be concern that we would essentially create this really cool, really nice vision that we would not be able to implement. So having that information will be essential. Also, including enhanced mobility framework. As we've identified, this is a spine for the Bicycle Transportation Plan. But more importantly, how does it connect into the rest of the transportation network, particularly multimodal in Glendale? This is an opportunity for us to turn this not, not only into a recreational trail, but also a means for people to be able to use it to commute. We would also be looking at enhanced vision and implementation plan. We would love to be able to identify opportunities for early wins. What are things that we can do to essentially kind of make our mark on this corridor early on so that, that the public does recognize that it's a real project that could move forward, looking for those kind of early wins? There's, you know, the term used earlier, low-hanging fruit, and being able to identify those and having a plan when we complete this vision plan to be able to execute those. A sustainability framework. We do have some elements in there, but being able to expand on that. That's going to be essential and key, especially if we're looking at habitat restoration. I believe you, you have all received a letter about this being able to serve maybe potentially as a wildlife corridor. Those are all things that we would be able to, to examine and. and understand a little bit better. And branding and identity. In fact, you can see the image there in the background of the Atlanta Beltline. This is something that we believe is going to be very, very important. Identifying what a logo, a color scheme, the name, whatever this may be, in terms of the title of the project, is going to be essential. We need to be able to create a brand, an identity, and a name that the public can immediately associate with for this project, something that will create a lasting impression. I use this example because this project actually is about a 22-mile-long route, the Atlanta Beltline. There are segments that are completed that are seven miles apart from one another, that some people, you know, rarely see both sides of it. But anywhere you go, that brand has become this very identifiable feature, and people know what the Beltline is, what it means, and what it stands for. And that's something that we would really be looking for as part of this expanded scope. And then obviously, more public engagement. We believe we were very light on public engagement in the initial scope and being able to fit that into the kind of limited fee we were working with. And the stakeholder coordination. As you're all aware, we are going to need to work with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Los Angeles County Flood Control District, the city of Los Angeles themselves, as we tie into the Los Angeles River, all of the businesses, the 18 different neighborhoods that are along this route. So making sure that we have a robust plan that gets all of the input that we need for this to make sure that this is a vision that can be supported broadly is going to be essential. Most importantly, this expanded scope is going to allow us to create a vision that is technically sound and implementable. The last thing we want to do is to walk into a room with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers or a Zoom meeting and have a vision that actually can't be executed. So being able to have this additional information as it relates to hydrology, engineering, sustainability, and transportation is going to be key. Most importantly, it's also going to allow us to be able to pursue funding for implementation as we have a more complete holistic vision that's less pie in the sky, if you will. Again, this will be a multi-year phased approach in order to implement and execute this project. So being able to have these questions answered early on will be key to making sure that this project moves forward. So the funding that we are asking for in the appropriation is $200,000 that will come from Measure M funds. There is no impact to the general fund. This is reallocation of funds that were budgeted for this year, but we did not get a chance to advance on and use for this current year. There would be no impacts to any in-progress Measure M-funded projects such as SB 743 compliance or circulation element update. We would go back next year and ask for another $200,000 to be reallocated back in so that we could put that money back towards projects like the circulation element. But again, there is no impact to that work. There's no impact to those timelines for this current year. Some of the next steps, if council approves, moving forward with the firm Milk as well as the appropriation of Measure M funds, is we would complete the contract and final scope of work with Milk. We anticipate beginning data collection and information collection processes, potentially at the end of this year, if not at the turn of the calendar year. That would include things like site tours and public engagement events, really after the first years where we would anticipate doing our first touch with the stakeholders as well as the public. We anticipate that this visioning process will take about 12 to 18 months. That's something that will come into a little sharper focus as we begin to finalize that scope. But we do anticipate having very regular check-ins with the city council as this process moves along. We want to make sure that the branding strategy is something that the council approves of and believes that this embodies the vision that the city of Glendale and the council has for this project. We want to be able to share the public feedback, and obviously, this is going to be a kind of iterative design process and be able to come back at several check-in points to make sure that the alternatives that we're moving forward with are supported by the city council. So staff recommends approving the motion to enter into a professional service agreement with the firm Milk. Staff also recommends to approve the resolution appropriating $200,000 in Measure M funding to be used for the expanded scope. As I mentioned, the team from Milk is on WebEx here, and hopefully, they're still awake. But if council has any questions for them, also, I am happy to answer any questions as well.
I have a question, actually. Okay, this is just the design part of it. Let's assume we did this, and Milk will do it. So then, implementation of it, what will happen with implementation of this? It will be a very expensive project, isn't it?
That will depend on the alternatives and what those proposed interventions and these design solutions would look like. Ultimately, we would expect to go back for additional RFPs for the implementation portions, who would be able to execute. Some of these may also need additional design, kind of fleshing out, if you will. So there may be subsequent RFPs that would go along with that. But the implementation, those would be separate projects, those would be individual projects. And much like anything else we do, we would bring that back to council for approval before.
I know. What will be the cost of the project?
That's part of the original scope, is identifying the overall cost. So everything, I would say that a comparable example is the work that was done for Artsoc in the Arts and Entertainment District, is that when we would bring these alternatives back, we would also bring back costs associated with them, so the council would be aware of the decisions and the direction that you're providing, both staff and the design consultant. So the cost is to be determined, but that's something that we would keep in lockstep with the design.
Approximately, would be paying hundreds of millions of dollars?
It's difficult to say until we know what the interventions are. I would say also, even more importantly to this, is that looking at this in sort of a piecemeal fashion, it is a very big scope. It is a very big project. It's very ambitious. But looking for those opportunities where we can make kind of early changes, inexpensive changes, that low-hanging fruit, if you will, that starts to build momentum for the project so that we can use that to go and identify funding, whether that be grants or anything.
Mr. Lanziffen, you were coming to say something. Why you don't say it?
Mr. Mayor, I was coming to say, and now I'll emphasize that final statement, what this vision will do for us is really open the door to grant funding. And at the end of the day, that's where we see a lot of this money coming from, grants. It's not something that we're going to do all at once. I think we've said several times, we anticipate that we'll do this in sections, in phases. Mr. Calvert has talked about Beltway, where they're separated by miles, and we might be doing something down by the LA River, and something in downtown, and then something further to the north. But this is a plan that hangs it all together, and we can go out time and time again and say, we've done the work, we're ready for this kind of funding, and then be eligible and in a good position to obtain that funding.
I understand, but both of you are hesitating to say a figure, approximate figure.
We don't know. It hasn't been designed. I can't give you a figure.
All right. Any questions from Mr. -- yes, Ms. Devine?
Thank you, thank you. Is that Mr. Milk, Jerry?
Jerry Van Icke, yes.
Jerry, Jerry. But, you know, I'm over the moon over the selection of this particular, what do you call yourself? Tell me, help me here, company, a design firm. The projects are absolutely amazing.
We call ourselves urban designers and landscape architects.
Urban designers and -- okay, well, they're fabulous, fabulous. I can only dream that I will be alive when this comes to fruition here in Glendale.
Why not?
But your creativity, your originality, everything is so inviting. But there are two concerns that I have, and I've heard from others. First of all, do you have subcontractors here in LA that you would be working with? Are you in that part of the development of this project?
As we, we're working with a Los Angeles-based engineering firm called Gure Hapelt, who will assist us on the level of sustainability, hydrology, but also, for example, economics, right? The fundraising issue came up earlier, and we are very experienced in working on many levels, see how we can unlock additional funding. And maybe I'm completely jumping begun here, but, for example, there's also a possibility for private funding streams, right? So our designs are very often based on fundraising, naming rights of certain elements, et cetera, et cetera, in addition to public funds.
Right. And someone asked me, well, how will you do this? Your headquarters are in New York, and how would you do that? And I, you know, I say, well, they've done things in, you know, in Singapore and Sacramento and all over the world, all over Spain, all over the world. So that shouldn't be a problem.
And actually, I was disappointed. Because two days ago, I was in Glendale, and it wasn't warm enough for me.
Well, we'll try to arrange it when you're back. Although, we did arrange tonight to win the World Series for you, so you can celebrate that with us, okay?
Oh, excellent. What I wanted to say is we have lots of work, as you know, as you already mentioned, all over the country, and also in Southern California. So we're there all the time, so.
All right. That's great. Well, congratulations on this proposal, and I hope it works out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice to meet you, Mr. Mayor and all the members of the city council.
Let's see if anybody else has a question from you. Any other comments, questions from -- yes, Mr. Brad.
Yeah, I have, I want to echo what Councilmember Devine said. I'm also over the moon. This is really a great, exciting opportunity for us, you know, as a city, and then for us to work together. So I'm super excited. And I looked up your presentation, I looked on your website, and you've done, you know, amazing stuff. I guess the one question I had, and the fact that you're on here right now at, what is it, 12:04 a.m. your time, the question was, how much of you are we going to get? I mean, there's this famous guy, Jerry Van Icke. I know you've done all these, you know, major projects around the world, and you sign up with a firm, and then there's, you know, a B-team. So how much of you do we actually get? Are we gonna, are we gonna see you here?
Absolutely. And I promise you, you won't get sick of me.
I won't get sick of you. No, you should promise me I won't get sick of you. That's what I want to hear.
I will be there all the time, and you won't get sick of me.
Okay. No, that is, I mean, in seriousness, you know, when I look at your material, it's very much about you, but I know that you're, you know, you've got a big team, you're not going to do all the work. So could you just describe a little bit how the team would work, how you would, you know, what role you would play, and what role other people would play?
First of all, we're not, we're not some sort of like multinational or something like that, right? We're still a boutique design firm, as it's called, and we hand-select all the projects, you know, in combination with RFP responses and that kind of stuff, that we feel, you know, really, really attracted to. And so we pride ourselves that all of our projects get all my attention, and also of my senior staff. Ian and Sabina are currently on the line also, you know. And we will work with a small team on this project, in a very concentrated fashion. And I really look forward to getting you, getting to learn, to know you all personally.
Okay, thanks. And I, you know, I do have kind of a gentle comment. I know that, you know, we're going to get some concepts, and then we're going to talk about implementation, and that'll go on over many years. There's some echo. Oh, I don't know what's going on. Anyway, I'm hearing myself as I talk, so it's a little difficult. But I was just going to say, you know, as we look at the implementation, I would, I would like us to kind of implement from south to north, you know, focusing on the areas, right, you know, first of all, right up in Pelham Tony and Grand Central, right along the confluence with the LA River, because we're going to have, you know, we have the, what's it called? The Riverwalk. And there's going to be a bridge going into Griffith Park, and so there's a great, you know, opportunity to connect with that. And also, as you go up from Pelham Tony, you go kind of that segment that's east-west, that's where you're going through the most densely populated areas of the city, the areas that have the fewest access to parks, the areas that are more renter-based. So I would hope that, you know, that's where we kind of focus. And then, and then we can move north, you know. That connection to Glendale College, I think, will be really powerful, not just because I live near there. I do want to be able to jump on that bike path and ride into Griffith, but that's not really the point. It's just that, you know, if we could get students, you know, using that to get back and forth to the college, I think that will create a lot of life around the college. I don't know if you've seen that area, but it's pretty much people drive, park, and they go into the college. There's no real life in that, in that area around the college. And one of the things, I'm hoping that this can maybe lead into at some point in the future is a more just activated college environment in that, in that particular area. So anyway, those are just some thoughts I have about implementation. But I'm just, you know, tremendously excited about this, and I want us to move forward. I fully support staff's recommendations, and thank you for all the work, Bradley, and the team, you know. It's moved very fast on this. Appreciate it.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your initial remarks.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other comment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the council, my colleagues. Yeah, I've supported this feasibility study in the, in concept. You know, my concern is, you know, part of it is, we've alluded to it, but, you know, having a firm that is not LA-based, or at least regional, or California, is somewhat of a concern to me. I see things such as the branding and identity portion of this report, and I know this predates Mr. Calvert's time here, but I have flashbacks, not in a positive way, of when the city spent taxpayer dollars to hire a firm from Nashville to come up with a rebranding for the city of Glendale that resulted in the multicolored Squigly's logo that has since gone away, fortunately. And, you know, with additional funds, I do appreciate the creativity of getting the Measure M funds for this, but the question I have to ask myself and ask others is what proposals would have come from, what type of proposals would we have had if other firms knew that there was going to be an additional $200,000 in the pool to work with? So generally, I support this. I am cautiously optimistic, and I do want to make sure that we have the full involvement of the firm and staff, and not a single dollar is wasted, although I am concerned about these changes.
Thank you. Any other comments? Or, okay, I guess everybody commented.
Let me just ask, let me ask Ms., our city attorney, whether, you know, any of the firms that maybe did not qualify based on this additional 200, you know, can a firm say, hey, we didn't know that there was an extra $200,000 that was going to be brought into this? How, you know, we would have had a totally different proposal based on that? Can anyone do that and try and negate our decision or challenge it?
Councilmember Kusaki, no. Essentially, as a request for proposals for professional services, it wouldn't be treated the same as you're thinking, perhaps, as a request for, or a bid, where the contract has to be set at a very specific amount. So that's, there's nothing legally inappropriate with adding in the additional scope.
And I would also add that this information was not disclosed. At the time, we did not know, when we went out for the RFP, to any of the firms, no firm had an advantage. They were all still evaluated on the same level of skills and the same level of anticipated budget.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I have the same concern. I expressed myself that adding at a later time to the amount of work or the fees we have to pay to the contractor in this case, it bothers me, whatever. What I'm concerned of, I try to figure out that what the price of this project is going to be, not on the drawings and design, the real, you know, implementation of the project. Because I've been involved with lots of projects, nice projects, and it never came forward, or they were unable to do it. So I don't know. We are hoping that we will do this, then we will find a source. Is that what we are trying to see, that from some governmental entity, they say, if you have a ready project, we are willing to... we are willing to, uh, to, you know, like, give you the money to do it or just this will be done by our own money. The project will be implemented by our own money. I'm not talking about design. I'm talking about the implementation of this design.
And part of the scope of work includes identifying funding opportunities. As, as you had heard Jerry kind of mention there, is, is kind of queuing us up, teeing us up to be able to, uh, identify private funding opportunities, grant funding opportunities. Uh, I don't think any of us are going into the expectation that we would be looking to use city funds to, to realize this project. This is going to be again, a, a long-range, multi-year effort, but identifying those outside funding sources such as grants. Um, you know, this is an active transportation project. This is a sustainability project. This is an open space project. Uh, there are going to be lots of opportunities for us to pursue here and, and that's really the expectation.
All right. Okay. Uh, if, uh, the designer or Mr. Milk, Mr. Milk, can, uh, tell me what's that exclamation mark in front of the name means?
Well, first of all, milk, uh, is, uh, is the Dutch word for milk. You see the cow behind me? That's, that's where the milk comes from. The exclamation point is, uh, is honestly a, a, a joke of our graphic designer and it belonged to the previous sentence. And it, it basically meant, I wasn't done speaking yet.
All right, thank you.
I, 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 I'm very pleased with, uh, with, with, with all of you being so, uh, open and candid. And I can, I can assure you, we will do, we are extremely, uh, stoked for this opportunity. Um, and also for the community, we very much look forward to working with you and everyone involved to transform this currently utilitarian piece of infrastructure into, uh, an attractive green amenity that will, that will be embraced by, by, by everyone. Also the council member who had to recuse himself. Uh, we're imagining a very recognizable open space with a unique natural identity, unique to Glendale, and we aim high because what we, what we want and strive for is not just an amazing vision, but also a plan that is actionable so that it will actually get built and enrich the quality of life for all residents of Glendale and, and, and perhaps, uh, uh, and that's where the whole mechanism comes in. Serve as a catalyst for additional auxiliary, uh, development initiatives.
So it will be as pretty as looks on papers, right?
Better.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I do have-
Uh, Mr., okay, we go to the callers. I'm sorry. We have callers here. Okay.
John Howell, you're live, John. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Hello, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard on the Verdugo Wash Visioning Study. My name is John Howell. I'm the CEO and General Counsel of the Arroyos Foothills Conservancy. At the risk of repeating myself, we submitted a letter requesting the council modify the proposed scope of work for your consultant. We included proposed language for those amendments. Glendale is in the Arroyo and Foothill Conservancy's area of interest. We are working to create and enhance wildlife corridors linking the Verdugo Mountains, the San Rafael Hills, and Griffith Park with each other and with the San Gabriel Mountains, which is the mother lode of biodiversity. And here's a quick little story. In 2017, a community development department planner called me about a new Verdugo Wash study and asked if I wanted to resubmit a letter we had sent in favor of, in favor of, uh, this sort of a project, supporting this concept. And when I pointed out that the letter suggested studying the wash as a wildlife corridor, he invited me to take a tour and we spent the better part of a day touring the entire, the entire Verdugo, uh, Wash with two, with three employees of the city. And really what that helped me to do is see firsthand the real possibilities, real potential that the corridor would have as a multi-use corridor, humans, bikes, and wildlife. So when, when areas of natural habitat like the Verdugos and the San Rafael become isolated, species cannot move back and forth to breed. You lose genetic diversity and they can go extinct. Since the range of species are dependent on each other, there is a ripple effect and the ecosystem can fail. So our focus is to protect the biodiversity.
That dropped. Is there any other caller?
There are, Mayor. Uh, I do have four more callers.
Okay.
Shannon Bonston. Shannon, you're live.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Shawna Bonston and I live in the Verdugo Woodlands. Um, I'm also Deputy Director with the Planning Department for the City of Los Angeles. Uh, I am also speaking in support of the Verdugo Wash Visioning Consult Recommendation and Funding Allocation. And I am asking the council to consider a few key additions in line with the previous speaker. Uh, the scope, I believe, would benefit from language that does allow for consideration of the wash to serve in part as a wildlife corridor with a design that supports native species, uh, contains naturalized elements. In some portions, that's not really heavily stated within the scope, um, or emphasized. In particular, I would urge the city to encourage that consultant has on staff a biologist or ecologist and landscape architects that can design with this important expertise in mind, um, or as mentioned before, a local subconsultant. And I would also say to add to the list of outreach activities, uh, considering a technical advisory committee that, uh, may include Arroyos and Foothills or Walk By Glendale or a number of other organizations, uh, that can kind of add their expertise to again, the many components of focus, uh, for the, for the wash. Um, finally, I also suggest including, uh, cal- counseling the Department of Fish and Wildlife and the National Park Service. I know there was a list of associated agencies, um, that the, uh, group will be coordinating with. I think they would be important as well. And then, you know, just in conclusion, the wash just has such a potential to be a substantial amenity for Glendale with so many, you know, variety of wonderful features that were, um, addressed. Of course, the pedestrian and, uh, safe bike mobility and opportunities for accessible open space and reconnecting the urban fabric in the parts near the freeway where the covert and infrastructure has been such a barrier for decades. Uh, earlier we heard from the staff presentation, which did identify sustainability as a part of the expanded scope and that's, uh, encouraging. And that seemed to include some habitat restoration. So that's great. Um, and otherwise it's just an incredibly exciting endeavor. Uh, I look forward to, to seeing future results. Um, and finally, I just would say that, uh, based on the entirety of the meeting so far, I'm really proud to, proud to be a Glendalean tonight and humbled by the powerful words that were here, the actions that took place, uh, prior and I'm sure, uh, future agenda items too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bonston. Next caller, please.
Paul Rabanoff. Paul, you're live. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, this is Paul Rabanoff. I'm calling on behalf of the Arroyo Verdugo Foothills Committee and all of the, uh, people that have signed petitions and, uh, expressed their support for this effort. Um, on behalf of all of those folks, I want to say that we're pleased and impressed with the direction and the energy that the city is taking with this project. And we fully believe that it will be an emblematic symbol for the City of Glendale. So thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you. Next caller.
Alec Barzos. Alec?
Yes, hi. Um, I just want to say, wow, this is such an amazing project. And I think this is a, a piece of work that is a long time in the making. I want to thank the community members for bringing this project to reality. Paul, thank you for doing that. Um, and thank you to the others who have participated in this. Um, this is a huge project for the City of Glendale. Um, this is a meet your moment kind of moment for the city. It's a huge project. It's gonna cost a lot of money, but it's gonna be an amazing project. And it's a multifaceted project, as staff has alluded to, to address mobility issues that have long, uh, for a long time have not been addressed by the city. It addresses open space concerns, uh, for South Glendale and other parts of, uh, the city that have not been addressed by the city. And for us to come together on a project like this and address all sorts of issues that have been longstanding in the city, I think is a huge success for us. Um, I also support the expanded scope. I think the public engagement piece is going to be critical. Um, I know there are concerns on various levels as to how we're gonna get input. So having that robust community engagement piece is gonna be really important. And I think through that process, you're gonna see a resounding yes on this project because it's so amazing. So thank you for moving ahead with it.
Thank you, Alec. Next caller.
John Howell, welcome back. You're live. Go ahead.
Thanks so much. Did you hear anything of what I said before?
Uh, we did, but you can start over. We, we probably heard about 15 seconds of it.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to be heard on the Verdugo Wash Visiting Study. And this is an exciting opportunity, particularly when we hear about open space, sustainability, native habitat. Um, what I'm gonna suggest is that we just add wildlife to the next. I'm John Howell. I'm the Chief Executive Officer and General Counsel of the Arroyos and Foothills Conservancy. And at the risk of repeating myself, we submitted a letter requesting that the council modify the proposed scope work for your consultant. Uh, we included proposed language for the amendments. Uh, Glendale is in our Arroyos and Foothill Conservancy's area of interest. We are working to create and enhance wildlife corridors linking the Verdugo Mountains, the San Rafael Hills, and the, and Griffith Park with one another and also with the San Gabriel Mountains. So here's a, here's just a little quick story. In 2017, a community development department planner called me about, um, a new Verdugo Wash study and asked if I wanted to resubmit a letter, which, uh, you're saying, supporting the concept. When I pointed out that the letter suggested studying the wa- wildlife corridor, he invited me on a tour. And so I took the tour with, with three staff members. We spent the better part of the take, take going up and down the, going up and down the corridor, uh, of the wash. I'm no, I'm no biologist, but it certainly helped me see first and the real potential of the wash for helping wildlife alongside of the other many benefits that will go on. So when air, just, just as a little background, when areas of natural habitat like the Verdugos and the San Rafael become isolated, species cannot move back and forth to breed. And you lose genetic diversity and they can go extinct. And since the range of species are dependent on each other, there's a ripple effect and the ecosystem can fail. So all this means is that our focus is to protect the biodiversity in the 30% of Glendale that is mountainous, natural open space. And the secret to biodiversity is sometimes not easy to do, but it's simple and that's wildlife corridors. You recreate passageways between these habitat islands so wildlife can mix and find new home ranges and also transport seeds for native plant dispersal. We prioritize lands to buy, then pursue them for these corridors, but we can't create wildlife corridors without partnering with local jurisdictions. And this, your project is a perfect example. The Verdugo Wash holds tremendous potential. And the conservation community, I can tell you, the entire conservation community in our region is very excited about this possibility. But again, we can't do it without you. Um, the Puma is provisionally listed as a threatened species and we are currently working with the City of Los Angeles and it's concerted planning efforts, uh, in support of this threatened species. We described the Upper Los Angeles, uh, uh, the, the, in our letter, we described the Upper Los Angeles River and Tributaries Revitalization Plan for the Verdugo Wash. And it was recently generated by a task force created by the legislature. You may well have had representatives, uh, participating in that endeavor. Uh, they did a lot of outreach and the resulting visioning plan, they did it for six tributaries, one of the tributaries of the LA Rivers is Verdugo Wash. And so for a portion of the, they chose as their, their featured pro- a project, um, one that focuses quite simply on enhancing wildlife connectivity for part of the Verdugo Wash. So I certainly hope that, that this, uh, that this Tributaries Revitalization Plan for the Verdugo Wash will be given close attention. So we are your land trust and we hope you will think of us as a resource. You're richly blessed with outdoor opportunities for your community to experience, enjoy, and learn, and learn from. And we are here to help. So thanks for considering our proposal.
Thank you very much. Thank you, John. Next caller.
Last caller, Mayor.
That's last caller.
That's the last caller, yes.
All right, thank you. Is there any comment or anybody wants to move the item?
I'll move the item.
I'd like to move the item.
Okay. So we have the second?
Second, I didn't get it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bratman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakin?
Yes.
Najarian?
And I guess we said can't participate.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Thank you. What's next, please?
8B Management Services Regarding Ordinance Establishing a Sustainability Commission. B1, Introduction of Ordinance Amending Title II of the Glendale Municipal Code, 1995. Add Chapter 2.85 Establishing a Sustainability Commission.
We need, uh, Councilmember Najarian to come back, I guess, on this item.
He's, he's back, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay.
You guys don't, you guys don't need me. You did so well. Just the four of you.
I was looking for you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, uh, I'm sorry. Mr. Golanyan, I was trying to find my brief.
No worries.
All right. Okay, Mr. Golanyan.
Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, I'm pleased to introduce this item. That's been in the works, uh, for a while. This is the first step, uh, in an organized and coordinated plan to establish a foundation and, uh, and a springboard to move forward with our current and future initiatives, programs, and projects related to sustainability and, uh, climate action plan. Uh, this has been discussed at council previously and we have received your feedback and incorporated into the ordinance. And I'm, I'm gonna turn it over to David Jones, our Sustainability Officer, to provide an overview of the report and the ordinance.
Mr. Jones?
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Um, first to say, I'm very happy to be here to introduce the ordinance amending Title II of the Glendale Municipal Code, um, for establishing a sustainability commission. Next slide, please. Uh, on September 1st, 2020, the Glendale City Council approved a motion, um, directing staff to prepare an ordinance to amend the Glendale Municipal Code to establish a sustainability commission and also to detail the function, scope, and purpose and composition of the commission. In order to do this, staffed research, um, current ordinances establishing other commissions within the City of Glendale. We also reviewed ordinances from the cities, including Pasadena, Long Beach, Chula Vista, Burbank, Palm Springs, and received some external input. Through this process, we wanted to understand the scope and work and, and areas of responsibilities under these different commissions in order to provide guidance for the scope and responsibility of the City in Glendale Sustainability Commission. This research identified that most sustainability commissions acted in an advisory capacity to city councils and provide advice on issues such as, um, green buildings, greenhouse gas reduction strategies, waste reduction, energy and water conservation programs, and other sustainability-related fields. Based on this research, we have proposed that sustainability commission be established consisting of five voting members and two ex-office, ex-officio Glendale students will be non-voting members. These students would be of high school or higher. The sustainability commission shall make advisory recommendations to the city council on how to progress and promote towards sustainability. General powers and duties of the sustainability commission would be to advise the city council on sustainability programs related to climate action and sustainability plans, low emission, low emissions development strategies, examples being, um, reduced greenhouse gas emissions in transportation, waste, and in the built environment. Also advising projects that focus on protecting biodiversity and ecosystems and projects are examples on improving air quality and water quality. And just as a recent example, the Verdugo Wash project would be an example of that type of work. The commission would also advise the council on sustainability programs related to waste management, green pre- management, green procurement, and recycling. Example may be advising on zero-waste plans and product stewardship programs. And also finally to advise city council on resilient, healthy community programs such as climate vulnerability assessments. In addition, the Sustainability Commission would seek inclusive participation of local regional businesses and public interest groups and residents of Glendale. It also supports education outreach activities related to the city's sustainability practices. And importantly, the Commission would prepare an annual work plan and submit an annual report to the city council. The work plan would detail the work the Commission anticipated doing in the year ahead. We have proposed an aggressive implementation schedule. We would like to, if possible, we've proposed the schedule because we'd like the city clerk to advertise for Commissioner members prior to the winter holidays so that potentially we could begin to select Commission members in early 2021, and hopefully have some meetings, the first Commission meeting in February or March 2021. We do not know how many applications we will receive, and we do not know how long it will take for the applications to be reviewed. So, we understand there needs to be flexibility in this timeframe. There are a number of alternatives. Alternative one to be established Sustainability Commission ordinance with a narrower scope of work. Alternative two would be not to proceed with the Sustainability Commission ordinance at this time. Or alternative three, the city council may consider any other alternatives not proposed by staff. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any question about this item? From Mr. Jones? No questions, so we vote on this? Okay. Oh, we have caller, please.
Mayor, we have one caller, correct.
Okay, let's go to the caller.
Elise Karafian?
Elise?
Yes.
Go ahead. You're live.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Agajanian and members of the City Council. I'm calling on behalf of the Glendale Environmental Coalition. We want to thank staff for bringing this proposed ordinance back so promptly. We have a comment that climate and environmental concerns are now factors in many matters before the city: energy sources in shortages, construction requirements, transportation, recreation, landscape management, and so on. And the proposed ordinance says the Sustainability Commission should meet at least quarterly, and issues with sustainability impacts are coming to city council almost weekly. We believe the ordinance should require that the Commission should meet at least monthly, and should be encouraged to meet more frequently or to form ad hoc committees to focus on high-profile matters with sustainability impacts. And with the appointment of the Sustainability Officer and creation of the City Sustainability Commission, we're officially committing the City of Glendale to work toward a sustainable future. So, the Commission shouldn't just review and approve matters, it should instead be briefed in advance and throughout the reporting process to address sustainability impacts before proposals are finalized, as we expect a Sustainability Officer will be as well. So, we ask that that Sustainability Commission meet more often than quarterly, at least monthly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Alec Bartros. You're live. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Alec Bartros. If you guys are on a roll this evening, I just wanted to say that I support this item as well. I've seen how Sustainability Commissions work in nearby cities, and I think that it's important for a citizen group like a Commission to engage with council members and figure out ways to strategize and move ahead policies that address climate change. So, definitely support this, and thank you for pushing this forward.
Thank you very much, Alec. Next caller.
No more callers, Mayor.
No more callers. Is there any comment on this item or anybody wants to move the item?
I have a comment. Yeah, I also was concerned about the suggestion that the Commission meet only quarterly. I raised that with Mr. Golani, and we discussed that. So, I would just like to see the Commission meet monthly. Initially, anyway, there's a big backlog, there's a lot of work to be done, so I'd like to see that happen. I like the idea of potentially setting up ad hoc committees. So, I would support that suggestion from the caller. And I want to thank David Jones and staff for moving this along so quickly, and the aggressive timetable, I think, is good. I don't think there'll be any shortage of people that will be highly qualified to sit on this Commission. And I would like this Commission to be very involved and engaged. Obviously, council sets policy, but I would like this Commission to not just be opining on things that are brought to them, but really be part of brainstorming potential directions that we can be taking in ways that we could really become a leader in Southern California on issues of sustainability, of climate action, and climate adaptation, biodiversity, and some of the other things that people have mentioned. So, I would like to move the item when the time is right.
Okay.
Obviously, something that's very near and dear to my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Intrim City Manager Rubik Golani.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, Councilmember Brotman. In response to the frequency of meetings proposed for the Sustainability Commission, the ordinance stipulates at least quarterly, so we don't have to change that. Like I mentioned to you, we will plan on, at least initially, and I'm pretty sure they will have a full plate of workload that they would keep them busy for foreseeable future. So, they will start meeting on a monthly basis.
Thank you. Anybody else had any comments?
No.
No? Okay. Do anybody want, already, Mr. Brotman wanted to move the item? Is there a second? If there is no comment.
It's only introduction, Mr. Mayor.
That's right.
It's an introduction.
Oh, it's just an intro.
So, I guess the item was introduced by Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
No need for a second.
We don't need a second. All right. We don't need a second. Okay. So, we go to the next item, then? Mr. Darsin, do we go to?
Unless any of the councilmembers have comments, yeah, we can go to the next item.
I think they said no.
Okay.
So, next item, please.
Next item is Public Works Regarding Standards for Landscaping and Parkways. One Introduction of Ordinance Amending Title XII of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 by amending portions of Chapter 12 dot 4, dot 04, and 12 dot 48, and adding Section 12 dot 48 dot 130 and 12 dot 48 dot 140, the updated standards for landscaping in parkways.
Intrim City Manager, Mr. Rubik Golani.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council. This item before you has been brought to your attention and consideration a couple of times in the past. We have had healthy conversations, we have received feedback from council, and staff has made some changes per your direction in the ordinance. And I'm going to turn it over to Shay Eckleston Banwar, our Senior Public Works Manager, for a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of the City Council. My name is Shay Eckleston Banwar, and I'm with the Public Works Department, and I'm here to describe some changes to the standards for landscaping and parkways in the Glendale Municipal Code. First, just to provide a little background, following some extended drought periods back in July 2014, GWP customers were first allowed to apply for the MWD turf removal rebate program. And following that opportunity, we began to see a proliferation of non-standard parkways here in the City of Glendale. In December 2015, the Glendale City Council, in response to those, in response to the need, approved new parkway standards. In June 2019, the City Council reviewed those standards and opted to make no changes at the time. And then, most recently, in July 2020, the City Council reviewed the standards again and directed staff to make changes. As a reminder, here are the current parkway standards. There is, excuse me, there is, excuse me. There is a six-inch height limit for nonliving material and no limit for living material with the permit. Live plant material must make up 50% or more of the parkway area. A step-out strip, which extends from the length of the curb, at least 18 inches from the back of the curb, excuse me, is required. There may be no impediments to accessibility from the curb to the sidewalk. Fruit and vegetables are not allowed. No ivy or dense ground cover is allowed. No loose materials such as gravel, loose rock, wood chips is permitted. No thorns, needles, or poisonous-to-touch plants, and no artificial turf. So, here are the changes that we're proposing to make to those standards. First off, we propose to redefine the parkway as public right-of-way between the sidewalk and curb. So, this would essentially exempt parkway areas where sidewalk is not present. So, those areas would be exempt from these standards. Next, we are proposing to increase the height limit for nonliving material from six inches to 18 inches. Next, we would rescind the restriction on loose materials such as stones, loose rocks, wood chips, and gravel. So, these materials would be permitted within the parkway areas. Next.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
It was, it was not permitted before. Now, it's permitted?
Yeah, we are proposing to permit that material.
But we, previously, we were saying this is going to get through the rain and, you know, storm drain and other, through the pipes, going to cause problems. What happened? I can't remember why we had to. I can understand if somebody has it not to change it, but to invite somebody to come and does this, to have loose rock and whatever this small, this loose material, isn't this going to cause rain problem?
Mayor Agajanian, there are benefits, there are benefits or advantages and disadvantages to this type of material. One of the disadvantages, as you stated, is that it does wash into the street and gets into the storm drain system. I guess an advantage would be that it's permeable so that rainwater passes through. But, you know, this is something that was discussed at the previous meeting, but the direction that we got at that time was to make that change regardless.
Okay. Thank you.
So, next, we would change the standards for the 18-inch step-out strip from a uniform walking surface to reasonable walkable surface. So, this change is recommended, and this was something that was not discussed at the July meeting, but we are recommending this change so that loose materials such as the stones and loose rocks would be allowed for the entire width of the parkway. And this will, in effect, bring a lot of current noncompliant parkways into compliance. Next, we would recommend reducing the requirement for living plant material from 50% to 30% of the parkway area as directed by council. Next, eliminate the restriction on needles, spines, stickers, and thorns. Poisonous-to-touch plants would still be restricted. Next, reduce the permit requirement to allow nonliving material under six inches of height without a permit. So, currently, a permit is required for any living material over six inches of height or any nonliving material regardless of the height. This would, in effect, allow any material without a permit below six inches, and a permit would be required for everything above six inches. And lastly, you know, pursuant to this additional flexibility, we would add a requirement that the property owner be required to maintain the parkway in a safe and non-dangerous condition, and that they would be directly liable for any injuries or damage that result to persons from their failure to do so. And with that, I'll just provide a few examples of the changes that we're proposing to make. So, this parkway area, because it does not have sidewalk, it would be exempted from the standards. There are a couple of boulders in this parkway area that are between six and 18 inches. They currently would be prohibited, and under the new proposed standards, they would be allowed. This one, you know, we have the loose rock, gravel currently prohibited, and it would be allowed. The 18-inch step-out strip, changing the standards from a uniform, firm, walking surface to reasonable walkable surface, this will actually, in effect, allow this parkway right here with the gravel going all the way into the curb. So, without this change, it would be prohibited from 18 inches from the back of the curb.
So, that's what I meant. It's not going to get, previously, yeah. So, it's going to get to the street, right? They will walk over, they will push it on the street, and then rain going to wash it through the drain, isn't it?
Mayor Agajanian, that's probably going to happen in some instances, yes.
Then it's going to get through the channel and cut the channel and create backlog. Water will come back and causes problem. I don't know. All right.
Reduces the living plant requirement from 50% to 30%. Cactus will now be permitted in the parkway as well as rose bushes and other plant material with needles and thorns. Changing the permit requirement, so, you know, this particular example has some planters in the parkway, and a permit would still be required for something like that. And lastly, you know, I had mentioned that with, in exchange for this additional flexibility, we are assigning some liability to the adjacent property owner. They are going to be required to maintain their parkway areas in a safe and non-dangerous condition, and, you know, if there's damage or injury as a result by their failure to do so, then they would be held liable. That's my presentation.
Thank you. So, is there, Ms. Devine? Ms. Devine?
Some calls. Do you want to take those first, or do you want me to just go on?
Okay, let's see if we have callers first.
Mayor, I do have one caller.
Let's go to the first caller, and then we'll come back to you, Ms. Devine.
Lee Strauss, you're live. Lee, go ahead.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council members. I just wanted to call. I called in back when this came up a few months ago. I want to thank the council, especially council members Devine, Brotman, and Kasakin for really listening to not only myself, but other residents that were being targeted by this ordinance in a negative way. by this ordinance in a negative way. I'm very pleased that the ordinance has been, the definition of parkway has been defined as the area between the curb and the sidewalk, which takes where I live out of it, because we have no sidewalks up here in the foothills in this area where I'm at. So really, I, thank you, thank you. Once this gets finally approved, the nightmare that started for us back in mid-2019 will come to an end, and I just appreciate the council for being, the council members being empathetic that there was an ordinance in place that was having a profoundly negative impact on a lot of people's lives. The lawyer in me has provided some comments to some of the council members, and if they find them to be worthy of your discussion, I'm sure they'll bring them up. But again, thank you, thank you, thank you. Good night.
Good night. Thank you. Next caller.
Mayor, that was the only caller.
Okay. So, okay, we go to Ms. Devine. Do you want to comment on the item?
I, I first want to start with Shay. And let you know, Shay, that we received, I, I received, and I'm sure all of us received, an email today that thanked you and praised you for your explanation of this ordinance and some of the definitions that were necessary. So I just wanted you to know that there was positive feedback about you, so that's, that's the good news.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay. First of all, I think we have to remember that the reason we brought this up was to, was hopefully to prevent parkways from being weapons between neighbors. And so, and I, if you look at the intent or the purpose and the intent of the ordinance, and one of the purposes is to allow for flexibility for a variety of landscaping options, because we do have a lot of people that, number one, didn't know about the ordinance, number two, knew about it, did it anyway, and number three, neighbors that were reporting neighbors because of, you know, them not following our ordinance. So I think this will allow that flexibility. I hope, hopefully, it will prevent some of that, that angst to be neighbor and neighbor. I asked about grandfathering, the, those that have their landscaping already in, that they would not have to pull a permit for, if need be, is there, and there was a, I had a discussion with, I think it was, was it Yaz, Yazton? We had, at the briefing, or Shay, about the grandfathering, and how that wasn't really feasible.
Mr. Mayor?
Or Mike.
Okay, Mr. Phil Lanzofame is here.
If I recall the conversation, you were asking if, if those that are currently have a violation could be grandfathered and, and I guess forgiven. The way that we have done this in the past, when policy has changed and ordinance has changed, we've held all those in abeyance, and if the council adopts this ordinance with these standards, anybody that meets these standards, we would simply close the case. They would be in compliance. That's what we're, we're seeking. So we would close the case, there would be no penalty or any, anything like that. In those cases where, in those cases where they do not meet the code, and, and I think one of the areas would be if it's completely loose gravel on the, on the whole thing. The ordinance calls for 30% to be live material. We would inform them and say, you need to comply by including 30%, and then, once they comply, we would close the case. So there's really no need to grandfather, quote grandfather, anybody. We would simply, if, if they meet the current code, they comply, we would close the, the case, and the violation would go away.
So we wouldn't be requiring people who already have landscaping in place to be required to pull permits or change landscaping that has likely caused thousands of dollars?
You know, I, I don't know that we have talked about, let's say, somebody has a six-inch boulder, or a, let's say, a 12-inch boulder in their front yard. We would have cited them for a code violation. Now you get to compliance, do they comply? Well, they technically don't have a permit. I suppose that would be up to the council, whether you want to allow those or not, or actually have those people go and get a permit to legalize the, the improvement. We do that with, let's say, illegal building. We make people go back and get a permit, show us what they're going to do. We inspect it and say, yes, it meet, now it meets code, or it does meet code, and we sign off on it. So I think that would be their, that would be your, your policy decision, so whether you would want people that have put something in that's currently illegal, this code changes, it's now permitted, but you need a permit to do it, do you want them to go to Public Works and get a permit?
If I may add to, Councilmember Devine, keeping in mind that the purpose of the, of the permit process is to ensure that they comply with the standards that you're just adopting, so, and to Phil's point, typically, when you are grandfathering an activity, it's because you're adopting a rule that's more stringent than the one you have in place, and you want to let those that are, don't, don't currently comply, let them go. This is the reverse, where actually, in some, some cases, most cases, loosening the requirements, so you, you still want to make sure they're complying with the new standards, and then comply with whatever permit process you have in place.
So if someone has a parkway and they need to correct it in some way, they're gonna have to go to and get a permit to do that, or no?
Well, let me give you two examples. Let me give you two examples. Let's say somebody has 100% loose gravel, and that doesn't, that still doesn't meet the code, if you adopt this ordinance, it still wouldn't meet the code. But to meet code, they've got to, they've got to plant 30% of that with live material. Well, if they plant that with something that is less than six inches, they don't need a permit. They just plant it, call us out, we inspect it, and say, you comply. Now, if somebody has put a, let's say, a, let's say, a 24-inch boulder in their yard, and we've given him a violation, a citation, and you adopt this code, and we would ask them, go and get a permit for that boulder. Now, somebody would go in, and they'd say, I've got a 24-inch boulder, and Public Works would probably tell them, I'm sorry, that still doesn't meet the code. They would not issue the permit. Or they say, what if I remove that and put an 18-inch boulder in? That would be okay, but you still need a permit to do that.
Okay. I, okay, I under, I understand that. Thank you, Phil, for that explanation. Then I, I think, other than that, I think I'm good with this. I think we're encouraging the use of water-efficient landscaping. That's a good thing, because, you know, it would, it'd be who's in, now they can plant, you know, cactus and that sort, and ensuring preservation of permeable surfaces for absorption of water. I think this does a lot of good, and it hopefully will eliminate some of the angst that we've created with the old ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment, or anybody wants to move the item?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Kusakian?
One, one question regarding, I think, Councilmember Devine was, already went through a couple of the points, and I appreciate the clarification that Mr. Lanzofame gave us. There was one good point that was brought up by Mr., a, a letter that we received from Mr. Strauss, that, that said that, you know, in terms of the height, six, six inches is not that high, specifically referring to Section 12.48.060, requiring a permit if there's going to be any living, non-living material utilized in the parkway. Do my colleagues have an objection to raising that six inches to possibly 12 inches, so people have more leeway as to what type of materials to get? Because six inches is fairly low.
I, I would go along with that.
I'm fine with that, too.
I mean, I didn't get that letter, so I'm not exactly sure about the finer points that Mr. Strauss was raising. So, but you guys look like you have it under control.
I'll make sure to forward it to you next time.
Okay. Okay, so.
I just, I just wanna, excuse me, I just want to raise the question of this loose rock. Again, I want to be on the record that I do not have problem with if somebody has it at this time. But to encourage others to lose, loose rock, this is a inviting problem for our drain system. So I don't know how we came about to encourage people to use loose rock in their parkway. Surprise.
Well, if I may, I don't know, is Mr., Shay, can you answer that? Or I can, if I, Mayor, if I may, I think this was part of the, the issue that we were addressing, the fact that so many people in our community did not follow the ordinance, and they have gravel. And that would mean that if, if worse came to worse, we would have to go out and, and cite almost three-quarters of our, our residents for having gravel in their parkways. And it just, it just, it just wouldn't be, wouldn't be feasible to do something like that.
No, what I was saying is whoever has it at this time, it's fine, but we don't have to encourage from now on to, to use loose rock on the parkway. That's what I was saying. I mean, if they have it, I don't want them to go trouble of changing it, getting permit or whatever, but to encourage them to do it now on is what I'm worried.
Mr. Mayor, I would just note that, well, when I don't know that we're encouraging, it's just being permitted as regulated by the code, but it, it would be impossible, or next to impossible, to allow the ones that have it to keep it and prevent others in the future, other than those folks that are, are coming into the permit, but it'll be difficult to enforce, somebody just puts it in there and says it was already there, and then they come in after the fact. That's, you either have to allow it or not allow it, and I think this, and I would just note, this was the discussion that the council had, this is the direction that the council gave to staff to prepare this ordinance.
All right.
So, Mayor, I'd like to introduce the ordinance, if I may.
Is there a second?
Well, there's no need for a second.
Well, let me, let me.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Devine.
Yes, just with the one, one change, and that would be that a permit is required if a non-living material utilized in a parkway is over 12 inches high.
Ms. Devine, is it, is it just non-living, or both?
Living, or non-living, I'm sorry, yes, living or non-living, yeah. So I will introduce the ordinance with that amendment.
Mr. Najarian?
Well, I mean, are there any ramifications for 12-inch high? You know, the curb, the curb can already be a foot or so high. Add another 12 inches to that, will people be able to open doors if necessary? You know, from the street?
Yes.
They won't be able to? I, I mean, I don't know if staff, six inches I got, I thought, I figured there was clearance. I mean, I measured a few car doors and saw there would be no problem, no tripping hazard getting out of the car. But 12, are people asking for 12 inches? Is that in that letter?
Well, Councilmember Najarian, so there is still the step-out stiff, step requirement, so 18 inches from the back of the curb. So while, you know, gravel and that type of material would be allowed, rocks, boulders, six inches, 12 inches in height would not be allowed under the proposed code change.
So 18 inches from the curb, and then you can go up to 12 inches?
Yes.
Correct.
Without a permit.
Without a permit. If you want to go higher, you need a permit.
Is there, I mean, are people asking for that? Is there a?
Yes.
Is there a?
What's a concern?
Oh, I see, it's in the letter that I didn't get. Okay. See, that's what happens when you don't send a letter to all the council members. Three council members know what's get, what's going on, and the other two don't. So maybe I'll just mute myself, and you guys can handle it.
Do you want to second the motion?
We don't need a second.
So we'll talk about it. I'll read it and get, get up to speed next week.
And we'll revise the ordinance with that change and bring it back for adoption for next week.
All right. So, okay, with that, what's, I guess, next? If we are done with that. What's next?
Oral communications. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Mayor, we do have a caller.
Oh, let's go to our caller.
Watch, watch. Here goes, here goes.
Christine Kiragosian. Christine, you're live, go ahead.
Hi, I wanted to ask a question. I wanted to know when Glendale will be allowed to have, like, a cannabis dispensary for patients, particularly, like, hospice patients who'd want to utilize such services in the area?
We don't, I guess, answer questions at this time. You can just comment, and we will listen to you.
Oh, okay. I thought the oral was for asking questions that are not on the agenda today.
No, you just, you can make your statement.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to just, I don't know, urge the city to think about, you know, having a dispensary for these kind of patients, so that, you know, our patients, whether they're in hospices, can have access, you know, to, to these type of services within the area.
Thank you, Christine Kiragosian. Thank you for calling.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please?
Mayor, that was the only caller.
Okay. All right. With that, I guess, adjournment, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Look, adjourn.
Second.
With that said, the meeting is adjourned.